At least you agree to disagree. That's.
Artificially.
Moving forward. All right.
Usually, most of my orders. Is gives me at least. I go so.
All right. Good evening. Like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of December twelve. Twenty twenty-three. Um, we will follow the roll and then please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Hathaway.
President.
Palmer.
Present.
Flinton, present.
Brazil.
Carrie.
Present.
Noel.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
Also present are township manager Parker and township attorney Pink.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one in. The review. That brings us to adoption of the agenda. I'd like to make a brief announcement about. Um, a couple of things. Um, there was some discussion about the process for assembling the agenda and. It's pointed out that we aren't, uh, the board, uh, doing as good a job of observing our own deadline that we set for ourselves when it rules the border. So I wanted to, uh, share that we've had some internal discussions about that. And this is more for the board and. And, um, staff inside of township than for the public, but, um, we're going to, um. Hold to our deadline of when the Wednesday prior at noon. Uh, going forward, uh, with the goal of publishing the, um, agenda and meeting materials as we have been on Thursday by five. Um, the other item I wanted to make a little announcement about. Um, is. Item J one. This is the presentation. Um, item by the downtown development authority with, um, potential action. And I just wanted to clarify that we won't be looking to take, uh, potential action with regard to. The DDA's request for reimbursement from the tree mitigation fund. Uh, that we will wait until we have. Um, a tree, uh, policy, tree mitigation policy in place. And that way we can, uh, sort of measure the DDA's project for planting trees. Against that policy and see how, um, a potential reimbursement out to the ADA would. Sort of measure up to the policy. Uh, it's a little backwards, but, um, the tree policy is something that the township has been working on. On and off for a couple of years. It's now nearing, um. A, a final proposal and we didn't want to sort of get ahead of that. Um, are there any other comments about the agenda or?
Question, one clarification. Would you want to just make that a discussion item then?
Well, we went back and forth about whether to make it a discussion item only, but we wanted to allow the possibility for action on. Uh, the question of funding of the road projects. So we left it as an action item. We don't have to take action, but that's why we left it as an action item. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying.
There's no motion. There's no model motion. So it's really if the board, as a result of our discussion together, chooses to take action, we sort of left the door open for that. But we don't have to. We could just move on. We don't have to take action.
So the Dino Drive issue merits discussion. Um, I think if we would be fine having this be entirely a discussion item. What do others think?
I mean, I, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, with having both of them together and then one's a discussion, the other one's action or possible action?
Well, there are several different, uh, requests from the DDA to the Buck Township Board. And leaving it as an action item allows us. The flexibility, even if it's a discussion item, we still have the flexibility for someone to make a motion. But, um, you know, the reason that we left it as an action item. Is so that it, it sort of leaves the door open for us if we choose as a board to take actions tonight. On, on that question of the, the road funding.
And, and I just want to say I'm glad the DDA is here to present. I'm excited to hear from them. I don't think we've had a presentation from the DDA. And as long as I can remember, so thank you for being here. Um, and, and, you know, it, 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 it's. It's sort of a, a mix of topics, but you know, I'm comfortable, um, proceeding. I'll just let the DDA presenters know I'm. It seems like the, the thing I'm most interested in is, is, uh, Dino Drive. I think that that seems. Most time sensitive and where you would need, uh, for support.
Um, so we are going to have a presentation on the tree fund then too?
Well, it's a presentation. I, I think it's probably simpler and probably makes better use of our time to just let the presentation unfold. And then we can ask questions. We can have some discussion. If the board feels that it wants to take some kind of an action with regard to funding of the Dino Drive project or other side road projects that the DDA is considering. We could, or we could just, you know, defer that decision until we get. You know, into the budget process.
There was nothing in the packet. On the presentation from the DDA on the tree fund. I would have reviewed their presentation.
But we're not asking for action on the tree fund tonight.
So I guess we're just going to leave it on and then when we get there, we.
That would be my recommendation.
I mean, I, I would say I, I concur with, with Kathy that, you know, again, we need to have items, um, better prepared. I'll say one thing about our agenda items. They should have, they should be meaningful. Um, you know, on, on what we're dealing with and we should try to deal with sort of one subject at a time ideally. Um, I do have one proposed amendment to the agenda. Um, J seven, it's technical, but I'd like it, um, for adopted agenda. J seven is possible action. Our rules of order have everything as discussion only or possible action. So I'd like that to be noted as possible action.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
So that's a amendment to the agenda.
Yep. Well, are there any other changes to the agenda proposed?
Yes. Um, the newsletter, this is, we have it under consent. Could we pull that to discussion? Or I guess.
New business.
Business. I'm sorry. Yes.
So that would become, uh, that would just move to the end of the business.
Okay. G three, G three to go after J nine.
Any other changes? Is someone prepared to move the agenda as changed?
No, um. G six, I had. Yeah, there is a couple of things that I wanted to make sure.
Or you'd like to pull that?
Yeah, I guess so. Cause I guess we have to if we're going to.
Just got it correct.
Um, and also G seven has charter township. So if we need to pull that to make sure that's changed, we're not a tough charter.
Well, if that's the only change, we can just change that.
The only.
Yeah. If it's just a correction to the agenda item, there's no reason to put it to the end of the business.
Okay. Julian, if it's just something in the draft agreement, I'll make sure that that gets corrected.
So what was that?
If, if you're seeing charter township in the proposal from Dixon, I'll make sure that that gets corrected before it's.
Okay. So is that the only reason that you were only going to pull?
Yes, just for that one.
Right. Then can G seven stay on the consent agenda with that?
Yes.
Okay. So G three and G six would move to the end of.
New business.
New business. Um, any other changes to the agenda? Someone prepared to move the agenda as modified?
I'll move.
Move by Riser.
Support.
Support by Flinton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That brings us to communications to the board of trustees.
Um, they are enclosed, including the last two that we, we received recently from Rob Pattinson and Kelly Thomas.
Okay. That brings us to public comment. Um, and, uh, Mr. Brazil, are you prepared to run the timer?
I think so.
All right. Thank you. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees. We start with those who are present.
Yes.
In the hall. Um, if, if you have a public comment to make at this time, you have three minutes. Please come forward when you're taking your turn.
Jess, how many have zoomed?
I'll let you know in a second. We're in the, when we do it right now. In person.
Howdy. I'm John Boyd. I live on Linden Lane in Syo Township. I'm currently the vice chair of the Compensation Commission. Uh, we don't currently have a chair and that's why I'm here speaking. Last week I received a note and resume from, uh, resident Judy. Uh, Monet expressing interest in filling the current vacancy on that commission. Uh, her resume suggests she has excellent match for that opening. I spoke to her yesterday and I'm very comfortable recommending her for that position. So I just wanted to come and share that with y'all.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Are anyone else who would like to speak during public comment who is present here tonight?
Everybody. Uh, happy holidays. A couple of things really quick. Uh, if you have questions during the DDA. Happy to help if there's something I can help with specifically, but I did go over everything in the agenda packet. I am happy to see that CTC was a side of township company was able to help you, uh, some of the internal IT issues and that they are on the consent agenda for approval. Uh, they also did some work for me earlier this year. They've proven to be very professional. Uh, someone else I invited here, just so you, you guys are aware of, I believe there was some talk about internet speeds and connections. Jared Bouch is in the audience. He may speak in a moment. He also helped us, uh, actually hook up to fiber. He has a company called Washed Up Fiber Transfer Properties. Uh, they are very price competitive compared to some of the other vendors in this area. Uh, they also provide excellent service, but I, I am happy to see a lot of. IT upgrades happening. They were obviously very sorely overdue. Um. Appreciate everybody and look forward to the rest of the agenda. Thanks.
Good night.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? If not, then let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
Right. First up I see Rob Pattinson followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Rob?
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, Syo Township president. Last week and then this weekend, I wrote to the board and to the community about the. Incident that happened at Soundship Hall where the sheriff was called. And I believe I understand what now what happened and it all boils down to number one. It appears supervisor Hathaway installed his township email on a, on a public computer. Everything that happened after that is his responsibility. Number two, the rack chair made the mistake of clicking on the Outlook application instead of the web browser. If the email wasn't permanently on the public computer, none of this would have happened. Three, as a result of those two things, number three is case closed. I have no idea why you thought it was a good idea to call the sheriff before you found out what happened. Why on earth would you call the sheriff before you talk to the people involved? Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. If you're interested in speaking, please raise your Zoom hand. Next up, we have Jonathan Greenberg.
Evening. I wanted to. Hey, how you doing all? I wanted to address a couple of things in the packet, uh, but I didn't feel like writing it. So I had, um, you know, chat GPT write my comments for me tonight. So bear with me. We stand at a crossroads, friends. The potential for unparalleled progress through technology beckons us forward, yet chilling specter of technological dominance lurks in the shadows. Items G six through G ten, but not G seven are not simply budgetary entries. They represent the lifeblood of our future, the weapons in our battle against technological subjugation. With these resources, we can ensure our technologies serve Syo Township and the humanity and not the other way around. Let us invest in G six through G ten, but not G seven. For our own sake alone, but for the sake of countless tomorrows. The choice is ours. We can either embrace a future brimming with hope or succumb to a chilling reality. Let us not be remembered. As the generation that surrendered to the machine. Let us instead be the generation that tamed the beast, the generation that chose hope over fear. Thank you, Chris, for preparing items G six through G ten, not G seven. Uh, with regard to Sheriff Gate. In looking at all of the comments that were made and at the time and emails sent since then, it's pretty clear that, uh, our supervisor. Uh, told an untruth when he said that the attorneys advised him to call the sheriff. We know that the only attorney that he spoke to prior to calling the sheriff was John Riser. Who later in the day told me he hadn't talked to the supervisor and had no idea what was going on. So the whole thing is just a game again, supervisor using his power to take a stab at somebody else who he doesn't like. Surprise, surprise, another strong woman. And, uh, that's the bottom line here. It's a unbelievable waste of our resources. It's a waste of our time and energy. And it's embarrassing that this kind of juvenile behavior continues. Have a great night, folks.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any other new participants interested in speaking? Please raise your Zoom hand. Last call. That's all I had to say. David Reed. Hi, David.
Yep. David Reed, Syo Township. All I have to say is I echo Rob Pattinson's. Comments and John Greenberg's, most of which I understood, but. I'm going to need some catching up on that AI, but thank you. Thank you, John, for speaking out about that travesty that has taken place within the. Within the last few weeks in Township Hall. What a ridiculous, as you said, what a ridiculous waste of time and what a juvenile act that was. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other interested members of the public? Hey, us. I see no more interested members of the public and Julian, to your question, we have eleven people joining by Zoom. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to F one. That's the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of, of November twenty-eighth. Are there any corrections to the minutes as presented? No, you don't have any. Okay. Um, someone prepared to move, uh, approval of the draft minutes?
I will move.
Move by Riser.
Also.
Support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes are approved. We also have minutes from our special meeting of December second. Uh, this was our strategic planning session. Are there any corrections to the minutes of that? Meeting?
I didn't ever see them. Did they email separately? No.
They were added late.
Okay. I just haven't, I'm not sure.
So they were.
The video or the audio was not.
Added on Friday. Um, I'm happy to share a copy here.
On a page.
Um, we just simply because we're expecting a full report from.
Oh, yes.
Facilitator. Um, we noted the call to order. Um, who was in attendance, board members as well as others, you know, various staff and committee members are all listed. Um, and just that the discussion, the facilitator led the groups through discussions related to service. Township branding, creating a blueprint for annual progress and establishment of priorities. The facilitator plans to submit a draft report that will serve as a more detailed record of the day's discussions, meeting adjourned at three thirty.
Okay.
Do we plan to add the facilitator's report to the minutes later?
No.
Oh, okay.
I, I considered that, but I don't think. Um, it would necessarily, I don't think, I don't know enough about the draft document to think it, I think it serves a forward looking purpose more than a, a record of the day. Is that fair? Okay.
We may refer to it without having the minutes. Okay.
Right.
Um, is someone prepared to move the draft minutes for the December second?
I'll move.
Move by.
Support.
Or move by Carrie, support by Riser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Those minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda as modified. So this is, uh, the consent agenda with items G three and G six moved. Uh, off into new business. Uh, is someone prepared to move the consent agenda as modified?
I will move the agenda.
Move by Riser. Support by Brazil. Uh, please call the roll.
All right. For our rules of order, tonight we're starting, uh, with me. Flinton, yes. Brazil, Carrie.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Riser.
Yes.
Hathaway.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Center agenda adopted.
All right. That brings us. To the reports. And there weren't a lot of written reports, although there was a late arrival from. Lucky Riser, the summary of last night's planning commission meeting. Uh, do you want to add anything? Or is there any questions for trustee Riser on that report?
It was really an overview introductions. Everyone introduced themselves. Then there was a presentation from Laura Krebs, our planning consultant. And then, uh, talked about some, you know, ordinances that are going to be, uh. Take a look at issues and ordinances that are coming down the pike. It's all in the report. Page and a half. Please, like, call if you have any questions.
I can do several.
Yes, you were, we were going to hear about.
Yeah. Um, today we got notification from Eagle. That Governor Whitmer has sent a letter of concurrence. Regarding the transfer of the Galman site to the EUS EPA from Eagle. So this was a part of the required process that had to occur. As we get closer and closer to super fund designation. The Eagle Director, Phil Ruth. Made a statement that the agency has worked closely with the EPA. On managing the site and will ensure an effective transition to superfund status. This letter follows a similar letter of concurrence that was sent several years ago from the governor. Um, stating that Michigan. Is supportive of the transfer to EPA and that Michigan will, the state of Michigan will be responsible for some of the expenses if needed. So that's it. I also, if you want me to give a brief report, I watched the Dexter City Council meeting last night. And Dave Lutton did a presentation. And then the Dexter City Council discussed issues related to the potential. Annexation and the forty-five acres in the Sloane Kingsley parcel. Um, one of the things he said was. The sewer study is not going to be done until the end of January and the water study will not be done until spring or summer. Those are later dates than what we had been told before. Um, Tom Colbert was present. He shared some basic engineering information. Initially in the presentation, Lutton was. Um, kind of nudging the Dexter City Council. To look at things more closely and takes some action. He wants them to evaluate. The positives that might exist in the potential annexation. So they have agreed to do so and they're going to. Come back. They didn't set a date, but there's going to be a financial study done. They're going to review this financial study. The financial study will look at. The potential costs and then the gains of this development proposal potentially for the city of Dexter.
Thank you. I'm just want to say I'm so glad we passed that resolution stating that we are not engaging. With the city of Dexter until they submit a formal request to us that they actually want to annex.
Thank you very much. Um, it brings us to, oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
I had a report. I know Donna has one too.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. And John, and yeah, Joyce has one too. Want to just go down to this?
All right. All right, go forward, Jessica, please, with your report and then we'll move on to the others.
Okay, uh, just two points. Um, I, uh, just had the Joyce and I in the finance team have been talking about the monthly or quarterly financial reports. Um, goal is for those to be monthly. I will say we've gotten a lot better in Syo Township. Um, at being able to, um, produce those timely. Um, I included just the funds that appeared on the proposed agenda tonight so that you have those for reference. Um, and they are current through, um, September thirtieth plus the December one revenue recognition. And so ideally where we'll want to get to is being able to have, um. Firm month end close. It's mostly the bankrupts month end close, you know, within thirty days, I would imagine. Um, even sooner. So we'll get there and I think we're talking more about it Monday, but want to thank Ally and Rebecca for their hard work. Uh, keeping things up to date. Um, a second update is on behalf of Lassa. We had a good meeting last Friday morning, a good turnout. Um, want to make sure everybody knows that for the first time in Lockalpines, Lassa. Um, two of nine houses, um, test, tested had lead levels over the action limit set by EPA. So every chance we have, want to communicate that, that out. They've all been noted. Um, there's very strict rules now from Eagle, um, because of the devastation, um, in Flint. Um, and so there's going to be much more testing performed over the next twelve months. We'll be testing twenty houses or more for lead and copper in the first six months and twenty houses in the last six months. I want to thank trustee Carrie for serving on Lassa. Um, we meet early in January and I think the Lassa board in January, we may expand that testing. Not sure we're going to see. Um, but a couple of important points, if you live in Lockalpine, um, first, um. All of our records and available testing show, um, there is, there are no metals in the source well. Okay. And number two, there are no lead service lines. So the best estimate is that it's coming from some of the plumbing or fixtures within the house. Houses. To people in Lockalpine, please, if your house was built from nineteen eighty-eight or older. Please be sure to reach out, um, because those are the homes that will be targeted for testing. Typically it's in copper. Pipes with lead solder is a common culprit as are fixtures, which lead was phased out of fixtures in Michigan as recently. Um, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, somewhere in there. Um, so again, it's, it's in all likelihood coming from within each of the homes. And so there's going to be. Um, homeowner responsibility, um, for engaging in this testing program because we really want to. Identify exactly where it's coming from and figure out the most efficient way, um, to address the source. Um, please go to lassawater.org or you can call, um, the lead. And copper hotline that has been set up for this purpose. Yep.
Treasure report.
Well, I just wanted to touch base. On this, that some of you, I'm sure maybe all of you have seen in your tax bill that you got. Yesterday or today.
Yeah. I've got a question from my husband about.
Okay.
What is it?
What does it say, Donna?
I'll read it. Okay. And then, you know, it, it's very well done. Print tech helped me, you know, with the, the wording. It says, dear township taxpayer. I'm writing to explain an aspect of your December tax bill. You will see a payment has been applied. This payment is your credit from the twenty thirteen Sia Roads. Special assessment reimbursement and I know. Many of you out there have heard the discussion in the past about this, um, being given back. The tenure assessment concluded with the collection of the December twenty twenty-two taxes. At that time, there was a balance of approximately one point six million. Left in. left in the fund. On May ninth of twenty twenty three, the Board of Trustees unanimously approved a compromise that included, one, funding for twenty twenty three road improvement projects. Two, a plan to replace the road assessment revenue. And three, a credit to property tax bills for the unspent road assessment revenue. Now, the refund goes to current property owners. Those are the property owners that were in place at the time we did the motion. The refund amount may vary depending on changes to parcels that occurred since twenty thirteen. As a property owner in either the Glade or Rose Drive Special Assessment Districts, you are also going to receive an additional credit because the revenues exceeded the road improvement cost for these projects. And that doesn't happen often, but that truly is, everything was done and exceeded. The other one is has a long story behind it, but the, the, the one point six million was a board action to return to the taxpayers. So that's what the payment is on your tax bills because it's the only way we could properly give it back to you and yet be able to account for the tax collections and balance the role at the end of the year, which that year is February twenty eighth. So I've had calls, people understand what I've explained, but I'm doing out there to everybody tonight. That's my report. The bills are out. We've got people coming in already. And all I could say is thank goodness we're through this process.
Yes.
Trustee Carrie.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. That was, that was a really nice explanation. I'm just one more point is that anybody that has a question about their, their refund, somebody that has a brand new home, well, there will be some sort of a refund, but it will be very small. Thank you to our assessor for figuring out this whole process. It took her a long time and there is a binder that you can come in and look at and you pull up your parcel and see how she calculated. That is not online because it's a lot of information, but thank you.
By the way, we chose this method because we thought typing over six thousand checks to send back impossible or a long time. Okay, possibly.
Thank you. Township manager, Parker.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention with our code enforcement officer. We had made a commitment to have him attend at least one meeting per month and he is here tonight in case there's any questions that you might have.
Oh, thank you. I'll just take the opportunity. Thanks for being here, Sean. So I, we don't expect you to have any data or policies or anything developed yet. I know you've hit the ground running. So just generally, how's it going and what are some things that you're working on?
So it's going, going good. I was able to follow up with the cases, complaints that I received from the previous person. Most of those had been addressed, a couple of them haven't. So I began addressing those. One of them, I've gotten compliance should be corrected this week. I'll follow up next week. Another one, I'm trying to contact the owner of the property to begin the discussion to get issues resolved. That's probably going to be a more long term project. I created a tracking system so that I can provide you numbers in the future of how many complaints we're receiving, how many were founded, not founded, how many been able to get compliance on. Created with the help of Mary and Deputy Clerk, an online complaint form. So residents can actually just go right on township website and file a complaint. And that will actually get emailed directly to me and I will follow up at that time and communicate with the resident regarding my process. Actually, today I was able to go to Northfield Township and speak with their code enforcement person and observe how they're receiving the issues, documenting and all that. And they are using B S N A for their code enforcement. So I will be proceeding with hopefully a presentation from B S N A in regards to how we can use it. I meet tomorrow with Inver Township to evaluate how they're doing it. I am currently, I was over there reading up on the ordinance and then also creating the procedures and that. So it's in writing on how a complaint is received, how, you know, from step one to step fifty, how we will proceed. So it's equal each year every time. And then if anyone needs to pick something up, they can easily look at and say, oh, this is what we're doing and so forth. So it's kind of where I've progressed to at this time. There's still a lot more to go, but it's a good start.
Sounds like you're doing an awesome job. I know you're creating this from the ground up, so we appreciate it. So grateful that you're here. I know Brandon told me about an incident that came up at a nearby restaurant.
Yes.
And I thought it was just like very good use of, I mean, a great response for our utilities director, great response for our code enforcement officer and the proper collaboration. So way to go.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions for Sean?
I had a question for Joyce.
Oh, I did not.
Thank you.
Do we have an update on the administrative review? What has happened? Everything stand at this point?
Regarding the investigation.
Yeah, for two weeks.
Yes.
The last four.
Yeah. The only update I have is I'm really trying to identify consultants that can submit a proposal quote in order for me to get the process underway. You know, I did also reach out to attorney think and he had some suggestions as well as far as firms that might be able to assist with that. So I'm waiting to get his feedback as well. So hopefully I'm thinking by the end of this week, I should have something more concrete to share with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now prepare to move on. Okay. That brings us to our report from L P C. Please come forward. And Will Weber and Barry Lannick, please introduce yourselves and then I think you have a presentation. Barry, can you, you need to be, oh, you're already up, you're ready to go.
Oh, it's our pleasure to be here and tell you a little more about what's going on with the L P C. I'll stand if I, if I might. I'm Will Weber, the chair, and I, we meet, well, we have the first slide, then the next slide. I'm with Barry, our consultant. So the program began in two thousand and four with a millage that was passed. And it's been renewed a couple of times, pretty much with the same dimensions that you see here. Point five mills, it's a ten year millage and so far it's generated about six million dollars.
Actually, was the first ten years.
First ten years, right. So and then it's been renewed in two thousand and twelve and many of you may recall in, in last year again for ten years with the substantial citizen support each time. There are twelve publicly funded land preservation programs in Michigan and they're concentrated actually here in Washtenaw County, six of our townships, and we often partner with the Ann Arbor Green Belt Program and Washtenaw County, various elements in our project. So there's a lot of cooperation and cross referencing what might be the best projects to work on. And it has become a model for other communities. Barry's published several articles about it that have been widely circulated and we, we really do represent a model program. So as to the commission itself, there are seven of us, all volunteers, of course, that you have appointed. And I think we may have some consideration further tonight of reappointments. Meet monthly, two hours. One of our major tasks apart from the meetings is we visit each of the properties and we have a scoring system that we fill out when we come back at our next meeting. We meet in this room and sit around and talk about the properties and what their various assets are and discuss with Barry what we think should be done with the property. And there's a fair amount of money involved in buying land, as you all know. So it's an important decision that we make regarding how we spend it, how we prioritize our, our sales. These are our current members, all highly motivated volunteers. I think we get along quite well and everyone is enthusiastic. Each has a specialty in terms of what they understand about property acquisition and preservation. Our guiding documents, there's the ordinance that's created, the commission, a set of bylaws that gets more specific. And then our scoring systems that are looking at the attributes of the sites that we visit. And those have changed very little over the twenty years the program has been in place. So just some more basic facts, total area protected there, over seventeen hundred acres, both preserves and some that we've worked with the county on for preserve Fox Isle Woods and Botzford. And then less conspicuous, but every bit as important, twenty one conservation easements that we've negotiated with private parties.
And so we thought we'd spend a couple of minutes just talking about conservation easements because that's something that many people are not familiar with. So this is a, a slide that has been used for eons to, to describe that as a landowner, you have many different rights to your property and you can exercise those rights. You can also sever certain rights from the other rights. And the ones that we deal with primarily are what we call the development rights. It's the ability that landowners have to divide their property into smaller parcels and to build houses on it. But it also includes things like making a gravel pit on the property, impacting wetlands, clear cutting woods. Those are things that you can do as a landowner. But you can also take those sets, set of rights and convey them to another entity like Siouxsia Township while retaining all the other rights that you have to the property. And that's what we do in a conservation easement. Those specific rights are conveyed to the township. The value of those rights is determined by an independent real estate appraisal. Does two studies of the subject property? What's the value of the property? If you put it on the open market today and somebody with development interests purchased that, they use sales of, of recent sales of comparable properties as nearby to the subject property as possible. And say, you know, based on that, those sales, then this is what that property would be worth today if you put it out for, for sale. And then a second study is if the property cannot be developed any further than what it is now, what's the value of that property at that time? And the difference then is the value of the development rights. And that's what we never to pay people. But emphasize that with conservation easements, the land remains in private ownership and on the tax rolls. So it continues to generate tax revenue here for the township. But the property is then subject to a permanent deed restriction. This gets recorded in the kind register of deeds and runs with the property forever. So it's a very serious undertaking that the landowner considers in doing this. These are some of the conservation values that we endeavor to protect in these easements, including agricultural soils, protecting streams, habitat, wetlands, scenic views for public roadways, water quality. Those are the things that we want to conserve on those properties of value to all of us in this community. There are a set of restrictions then you can't divide the property other than what we allow you to do with anything. Certain commercial industrial activities, structures, impervious surfaces. These are all things that we limit or prohibit in the course of the conservation easement. And then these are the things that we allow in the easement. You could, you can practice agriculture. You could do non motorized recreation in the property like hunting. You can lease the property to somebody else. If you're an owner of farmland and are not a farmer yourself, you can lease it out to another person to do that. You can restore the property to, for area or woods if you want to. You can convey it to anybody you want to, but it's subject to the restrictions that we agreed to. You can manage your woodlot, but it has to be done with a forest management plan that's, that's prepared by a registered forester. And then if you have structures of the property, you can maintain them. If they're destroyed in a fire or tornado or something like that, you can replace them as well. When we hold conservation easements, that's a perpetual responsibility on the township to ensure that the agreement that was made between the two parties, the landowner and the township, is being upheld forever. And that means that we go around once, once a year to the property with notice. And I'm doing that work for you all at this point. I send a letter to the landowner, follow up a week later and say, did you get the letter? Do you want to come with me? Is there a good time for me to come or a bad time for me to come? And then I walk around the property and make sure what we agreed to has not been violated. And as we had one example here in the last couple of years, we did have a violation of easement that ended up going to court and was decided in our favor. But the ultimate goal from, from me as your, as your staff person is to avoid those kinds of conflicts because that was a long, drawn out, painful process. And building good relationships with landowners, especially new landowners, not the original grantors of the property is essential to make sure everybody understands what they can do, what they can't do. So we avoid those problems going, going forward. So I just wanted to highlight some of the, the conservation easements that we have acquired over the years. Many of you are aware of the April Farm that we rescued from a, a development project after Mr. April had passed away. And that's now the Honeybee U Pick Farm at the corner, the northwest corner of Zeeb and South Church Road. Many of you know about the Wren's Farm over on Wagner Road, south of Liberty. It's now owned by Mike Festergaard. He's got cattle's pasture out there and has cut hay. And that was our buy, protect, sell first project where we identified a buyer through a public process and chose Mr. Festergaard. And then the nature and nurture farm, which is over here on Marshall Road, just a, a short distance from here. So here's a picture of the, the Honeybee Farm, kind of early in the season. They constructed the barns, you can see off in the distance there. And that is a strawberry field that you can go to and pick organic strawberries in season. They also have raspberries for U Pick now. They've planted blueberry bushes out there. They're planting fruit nut trees and letting some of that land just rest in the short term. But, you know, turning something that could have been an unfortunate change into something very positive for our community. This is a picture of the Wren's Farm over on, on Wagner Road, which has magnificent scenic views all along the way there that are now preserved forever. And then the nature nurture property just down the road here is owned by Mike Levine and Erica Kemter. And they have a seed company. You can buy vegetable seeds and flower seeds from them. That's where I get most of my vegetable seeds from my garden. All organically grown and available online through their website.
Back to you. Yeah, the process by which a property comes under our involvement, it's a voluntary application process. We don't go out making any sort of evaluations of property until the property owner comes to us with an application that lays out their interest in having the property considered. We make a field visit and then score the property according to the criteria that have been established, some of which are ours because they're mostly visual. Others are more detailed and involve evaluations, some by Barry and sometimes Carlisle Wortman becomes involved if it's a more technical soil analysis or something like that. Barry pursues matching funds and he's been very successful. Ann Arbor Green Belt has often been involved. Agencies of the Washtenaw County are involved. We've had state grants and sometimes very large federal grants that help with the purchase of larger parcels. There is a considerable due diligence process involved to make sure that what we're buying is in agreement with legal review and that we understand what the nature of the site is. Sometimes there's a question about the condition of the soil, the condition of the water. We want to know about all of that before we make any offer to purchase property or convey an easement. And then there is a process, of course, recording the easement that, that has been established. So how successful are we? Here's some numbers that will help you think about it. There have been eight point four million dollars of silo funds expended, but that has been matched then with twenty million dollars from other sources. But that has been matched then with twenty million dollars from other sources. So in a sense, we're paying for, as we look out across the whole history of the program, forty-one percent of the purchase price has come from the village in Syo. And that's the ratio there then of what actually we're buying in proportion to the actual appraised value. Of, of the lands that we've acquired, oh, forty-five percent are in natural features. And we currently have one point nine million dollars prior to the next collection that's available. And to again, think about how efficient the program is. Eleven point eight percent is non-acquisition cost, that's the cost of the surveys, the appraisal, various time. And so it's a, it's a fairly efficient program in terms of actually putting the money to work purchasing the property. So we're going to flip back and forth between two maps to show you where some of these properties have been located. So the green represent protected properties, this is in two thousand. Just for everybody looking at the map, Syo Township is kind of right in the middle. It's the cream colored site just to the northwest of Ann Arbor. So Barry, you can flip to the other one.
So this is what, what protected lands looked like in, in Washington County twenty-three years ago. The, the northwest part of the county is the Pinkney Water, the state recreation areas. There's a, a large area west of Manchester there that's a state game area. Various conservation easements, city and county parks around in two thousand.
So it hasn't been just Syo, it's been the whole county that's been thoughtful and proactive in conserving land. But you can see Syo was well represented with lots of new green areas since the program was implemented.
We're going to do this one more time just so people can see. That's the county, including Syo twenty-three years ago. And there we are, a couple of years ago now, we added more since then, but this is my most recent depiction of this.
So. Have any questions for Barry and Will?
Barry, I had asked you this question before, a couple months ago, about do some of the, I don't, we were talking generally, we weren't just talking about development rights at that time. But do some of the property rights expire after fifty years? And you had sort of given me an answer, but I've been asked the question again now. Could you talk about that and explain it to all of us?
So sometimes we buy properties and we own them. And sometimes we acquire conservation easements on properties and they are granted in perpetuity. The state enabling legislation for local units of government to adopt purchase of development rights ordinances requires that there be some way by which the landowner can repurchase their rights in order to qualify for state funding. Doesn't say anything else about that. And so when we were starting these programs twenty-five years ago, we said, how can we make this as difficult as possible? And so in our ordinance and all the local ordinances here, we do specify that the landlord could approach the township, the township is the, is the grantee, the holder of the easement after fifty years has passed and make a request for the rights to be repurchased. And in the ordinance, there's a, a process by which that request would be evaluated. And I, I remember, I can't quote everything, but I know for farmland, you have to say that it's no longer viable as farmland. And if that's the case, then the township board could act upon that request. However, we also specify that the township would have a right of first refusal to purchase the remaining value of the property at that time. So even if the township board agreed that the rights should be repurchased, the township board could say, well, we're going to buy the remaining value of that property and make it into a, a public space. In addition to that, so there's a, a bunch of hoops that one would have to jump through and after fifty years it's passed. In addition to that, I think every one of the easements that we've acquired involves at least one other source of funding and sometimes three or four. The Wren's property, for example, had four other funding sources, we had five total, including the township. So every one of those funding sources would also have to sign off on that, that request. And I'd like to say that the chances that all three or four other funding sources are going to sign off on it are pretty small. And so is there a chance where they could do that? Yeah, I suppose, but the likelihood of that happening is essentially nil.
Yeah, I, I guess a sort of a question you don't have to answer now, Mariah, but is there any way we can do better than fifty years in our ordinance? And, and, and what, no, I'm, I'm not asking you to, to answer right now. I'm just saying, like, we put that in our ordinance, we're twenty-five years through. I mean, this isn't twenty, so I mean, these, these questions will be coming up in the future. My, my question, Barry, is would you please provide, when you can, the board a list of kind of where we're at on each year of the conservation easement so that we can account for those and kind of where we're at year by year? Is that something that you have handy or is that something we could compile, we should compile internally?
Sure that I have already, so I make sure I understand what you're looking for.
Yeah, so kind of where we're at in those, in those fifty years. And the conservation easements, I'm asking for two reasons. One, just kind of for long, long-term planning. But two, also because we do need to, you know, one of our findings in our audit was that we need to capitalize and, and account for the fiscal value of the conservation easements. And so just as a starting point there, it'd be helpful to just have that list.
And, and I have that available and is certainly part of the annual report that the LPC provides to you all every year.
Oh, great.
But, I mean, I've got that document at all times and can send it to you. It has a list of all the easements, all, actually all of the properties that we have expended funds on, whether it's assisting Washington County's purchase of the Fox Science Preserve or our own purchase of properties that are now part of our preserve system here, or the easements that we've acquired ourselves. And, you know, when it was closed, how much money we spent, all that kind of stuff is immediately available.
So that's something we'll get at some, at some point, the annual report.
I can send it to you at any time.
The fifty years starts at the property closing, that's when you start the.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure, and I might have just not heard you say it, but it's actually a repurchase of the rights. So there's a lot more to it about appraisals and all of that kind of stuff. It's not just someone saying, I want my property back. And I think that there are a lot of safeguards. I mean, I think that this ordinance is really well-written. I, I would be surprised if people start knocking on the door asking to repurchase their development rights, but yeah.
But we could certainly make it even more stringent, we could make it, you know, a hundred years or five hundred years or.
I mean, I think if, I think that if it's something that the state is dictating though, that they might require that it have some reasonableness to it. So we would, we would want to look at that before we go too crazy with the timing. And then how, oh, sorry, go ahead. Something recently just went through the House and the Senate, Bill bought fifty-one twenty, there was a couple of them. And then the governor signed off on all of that. So this has to do with solar farms and wind farms. So how does that impact land preservation? Because the state could, well, they were, they, they were saying that we can, at a local level, we cannot say no. But if some, if there's property under conservation easement, does that protect? Or are we not there yet that we don't, we just don't?
We are, it does affect that.
It does, okay.
Yes, so we, we permit renewable energy installations on easement properties, but only for use on the property. And, and within, if it's a farm property within a building envelope, either with existing buildings or if there are no buildings, we sometimes allow an area where a house could be built or rebuilt, like on the Wren's Farm, for example, where the house was not really livable. And so that's been torn down, they're going to build a new house on the property and probably some other agricultural buildings. They could put up a wind turbine, they could put up solar panels within the building envelope for use in those buildings, but not for sale off the property. In addition to that, larger solar arrays are not permitted on, on the bulk of the property. So it's a hundred acre property, I think there's a five acre building envelope, something of that nature. So the other ninety-five acres cannot have solar installations or wind turbines along those lines. So, yeah.
Yeah, and, and Barry, again, and I apologize if I'm not listening carefully enough, it's been a long day. But, you know, what, what Barry's talking about is things that are negotiating in those, right? So you're, when you're doing a conservation easement, you're negotiating with the property owner about what can, what can happen on that property. So it can be very specific to each property. It's not like we're just, we don't, we have a template, but it's not just a blanket conservation easement, right?
That's correct. But pretty much all of the farm eneasements that we have done involve federal funds. And they have certain required language to be inserted into the easement. And one of those required paragraphs is no solar arrays on the property. But we may, I, I, I would think that we would, especially now with that legislation being passed, that we would write that in regardless of whether there was federal funding or not on most properties.
Barry Riser.
I know you can't say which specific properties are in the hopper because then it'll be a subdivision next year. But how many applications are there now kind of pending in the pipeline? And if you're to do a pie chart, are they, you know, fee simple acquisitions or offers for or buy, sell, protect or conservation easements? Like what, what might be coming down the pike?
We have eleven properties in hand right now.
Under consideration?
Under consideration. And I would say, you know, several of those are not active for one reason or another. It's not one that we're interested in or the landowner's not ready to move ahead. I think there's probably six or seven that we're actively working on. Most of those are conservation easements. There's one in particular over on Baker Road. That was a potential fee, fee simple purchase for us.
So I would ask, you know, I think, I think one thing that'd be helpful is to figure out, because we always have to be careful about keeping a good negotiating position. And I want to also make sure that the board's informed. So I would just ask that at some point in the next few months, whether it's a closed session with the board, whether it's a, I don't know how we do a, a privileged, you know, communication, I mean, it's, it's not really privileged communication for Barry, right? But probably a, a closed session where I think it would behoove the board, since we're responsible for making these acquisitions, to understand, you know, certainly we could all share out who's applied, right? I receive all the applications, but we want to know who's, who's seriously, you know, those eleven, whatever that number is. And kind of get an understanding of it. So I would imagine, I think the boards, we typically, you know, when we handle purchase of something, we're going to close session. I would imagine we could do that, you know, with the LPC.
I think we have to do as we've been doing. If you start doing another step, there's the potential of the information getting out there, which Barry has emphatically said, until there's serious yes, we're ready, we could be jeopardizing the piece of property that they've been working on. I don't think we want to do any kind of meetings, closed session, any updating, only as Barry is comfortable giving us the information. We don't need that.
So I, I was, I wasn't suggesting a new step in the process. I was suggesting getting this board up to speed, which is sort of the un-update. I would, I would also ask for, in addition to the annual report, whatever form, an update on the, the monitoring, which I know you do and thank you for doing that. I want to talk about just two, two experiences I've had on this board. Most of them very, very good, where we've got these amazing properties where I would say, yes, 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 yes. One was what you referenced, the one time we had to enforce a conservation easement, devastating situation. Everybody worked all together, we did the best we could after the trees had been cut down. Okay, so I want to, you know, make sure that we internally administratively, you know, that's a part of why I'm, I'm asking for more and more communication and collaboration between the open space efforts and our assessor, our planner and these, so that we can make sure administratively, you know, we have all of our procedures in place to minimize, you know, you know, do everything we can to make sure everybody knows, you know, that, that we're all sharing information internally as best we can. So that's just one thing I'll say. And then secondly, I'd say related to Sloan Kingsley, I think that's a, well, that's complicated, right? You've got a developer saying, hey, if, you know, you finance, you know, if you agree to the annexation, I'll be able to finance doing some good in the hood with many hands and give you a quote-unquote deal, right? It's complicated. I would say, I think we as a township have done a pretty good job of managing that and kind of delineating, there's an annexation conversation, there's an open space conversation. And then many hands can approach planning as need be. When I looked at our master plan, there is something Dave Sutton keeps pointing to and others have pointed to, the planning commission put it in the master plan, was that that area would be considered for development. I've also heard from you, and I know to be the case, that Sloan Kingsley has been at the top of the list. In fact, that was part of the reason why the board modified the ordinance to be able to go above appraisal, right? So what, what I'm wondering about with open spaces, how do we better coordinate our plans? Because on one hand, when I look at our master plan, it looks like that was suggesting development in our master plan for something that I've heard from you and, and I fully support. And the LPC reaffirmed their position that it's a priority to preserve all two hundred and the whole thing. So there's a conflict there. So I guess I, I, I'd like to ask, like, as we've done with parks with the Prose Plan, you know, kind of had a Parks and Rec plan, like, how do we have a, you know, open space preservation plan? You know, to kind of say big picture, you know, when we have wooded lots and we want to preserve our tree canopy, even if they're smaller than what's been prioritized before. If we want to go for Sloan Kingsley, how do we make that clear and make sure it's in our master plan? So kind of a question for you, but the whole board, I would say, we have planning efforts that conflict. And I think Sloan Kingsley was a really good example where you have conflicts. And I think the board needs to discuss those and, and decide what direction we want to go.
You know, that property in particular has been master planned for our, one, I think it is, you know, one acre housing lots for before, since before there was an LPC in a village. And yet, you know, so that's, that was the, the community's thought on, on that property. Yeah, from going way back. And then we come into play and we look at all the properties in the township and we say, you know, which are the higher priority ones, which are the medium priorities, which are the low priorities? And for a variety of reasons, that property in its entirety, it's got in front of John Mill Creek, the state natural river. Also, you know, surrounded by our, our preserve over there. And it's got, you know, scenic views from, from Baker Road. And it's got some high-quality woodlands and wetlands on the property, et cetera. You know, that went to the top of our list in terms of its, its priority. So there is some conflict there, but, you know, we can't undo what the master plan has said for, you know, thirty or more years and minutes.
Right, but, but we can. I, I mean, I'm just saying as a township, as a township board, yeah, and I'm not proposing that right now. I'm just saying the board can, well, it's not just the rezoning, but it's that, you know, higher density, special, you know, shout out to what became Heritage Woods and Baker Road buildings. So I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that's all the more reason. I think the more apprised the board is of the open space priorities, the more we can make sure that we don't do, run counter to those.
Right, so some years ago, we Right, so some years ago, uh, we looked at all the available properties in the township. Um, and there's probably seventy-five or eighty at this point that were of, uh, are still of interest. Either they have some size, um, or some, some, you know, quality natural features. You know, some of them are fairly small parcels, you know, four or five acres on up to the biggest ones we have left, two hundred and seven acres. Um, and Carla Wortman made maps for us of that, and that's available for you guys to see. You may have seen them sometime in the past, but that's one of the things that we refer to when we're, you know, got a new application in the door. You know, where does it rank on our priority list? So if that's something that's available.
Yeah, thank you.
And I did confirm, we have, we got a new application just recently, so we have twelve applications in hand. Um, we just did a mailing, which was the first time we'd done a mailing in a few years. We had so many great applications, it was like, we don't need anymore right now. But now we thought, let's, let's generate some more. And we got several new applications as a result of that. And I'm counting, you know, six or seven ones that we're actively considering at this point, including the, the newest one.
And just to clarify, the seventy-five to eighty part, uh, properties that were identified years ago, those are undeveloped properties?
Yes, currently. When I first made that list, it was a hundred and twenty. And now it's seventy-five or eighty, because we've conserved a whole bunch of them. A few of them have been sold and, and developed as well. Um, but currently, there's somewhere around seventy-five or eighty properties that are worthy of conservation, at least to be considered for conservation. And of those, probably, you know, I, I've made a category of farmland properties, uh, primarily, and ones that are primarily naturally aerial open space properties. And there's probably between the two of them, thirty or forty, I would say, something like that, that are the high priority um, total for, for the rest of the township. And there's the medium priority ones and so forth. But those are our, our focus, you know, it's, it's either contiguous to other conserved lands, or it's got great scenic views, or high-quality natural areas, or good quality farmland. That's, that's the criteria that, that we have used to determine where those properties rank.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So Jessica, I'm gonna send you, um, this, uh, uh, Excel spreadsheet that has all the information about all the and I'd be happy to send those, uh, maps of the
Right, yeah.
And that's, that's public information. I don't have any problem sharing that. We do endeavor to keep the applications that we have in hand confidential for the reasons that, that, that will stated. Um, we'd rather not the word getting out, like, oh, so-and-so's interested in selling their property. Oh, maybe I'll jump in there.
Absolutely, but they're, but they're not confidential from us.
Correct, yeah.
Actually, I think it was Treasurer Palmer stated that.
Actually, she did say, correct.
Let's who know that safer Barry is.
I mean, absolutely. I mean, as, as the person, I, I will say too, and I'm, and I, I agree. I will just say, as the person who's under our ordinance, receives the applications, has the information available, has people come to the front counter asking for it, it's, you know, um, it's, it's not about the details of who's in the mix or what the particular ones are. It's just, again, making sure that we're, um, making sure that, that this board is aware of everything that it needs to be aware of at the right times.
And also I'd emphasize that if we come to you with a recommendation to purchase a, a piece of property or purchase a conservation easement, and we enter into a purchase agreement to do that, at that point, it is a public matter. So anybody that inquires about that, I, I can do share information with them.
After the board makes the decision to enter to.
Uh, that's, that, that's one additional step, and that is that we actually execute the purchase agreement contract. At that point, by the Open Meetings Act requirements, it becomes a public matter. And we can discuss that openly, but before that stage, we can share information.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us now to, well, we have no unfinished business, that brings us to new business. Um, and I realize it's eight fifteen. Does anyone wanna take a break?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Yeah. Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. So please, everyone, just a five-minute break. And then we'll come back, um, and we'll, uh, move on with our business.
The events were coming.
Yeah, no problem. We're gonna try and follow.
But, you know, thank you, appreciate it.
And this is to the fun of the supreme.
Okay. So don't, so don't talk smack about me while I go. Something gets on the road, do I?
I saw it this summer. You cannot touch it.
Yeah, but I actually touched the Liberty Bell.
And I have a, um, I have a page on it. Coming down. Bring it a lot, but I and it was, I'm glad this is amazing, like, this is grand, really.
Everyone, please, please take a seat. Okay, we're ready to proceed. Coming, we're coming back from our recess now. Only took us ten minutes to take our five-minute break, but, um, if, if we move on, uh, item J one is the Downtown Development Authority presentation. Um, and our presenter is here. Would you like to come forward? Jennifer, if you would introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Tankenow. I'm, uh, on the DDA. I live in the DDA. And work in the DDA.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, absolutely. So do you, the tree fund or, um, Dino Drive, roads?
Well, so the, the, the purpose of the presentation, um, as I understand it, is to sort of provide some context for, so that the board understands, uh, the DDA, um, what, sort of what we do, how we do it. And then, um, the two requests that have been put forward recently from the DDA board to the township board. And one of them is that, um, the question of the funding for Dino Drive and presumably other road projects such as that. Um, and the other is the reimbursement for the tree plantings that occurred and potentially future tree plantings that could occur with DDA involvement if they match up with the tree fund policy.
Yes. Um, so I don't know what you are all aware of in regards to DDA. Um, but we obviously, our intent is to tell our impact, uh, the, the downtown Development Authority area. Um, lots of things that we've done include a lot of the roads activity, the whole boulevard development, creating a bond for that in various sections. We have, this past year have done, or I guess the past couple of years, we implemented bus shelters to make it safer and easier for those who are riding the bus to have somewhere safe to sit, light, et cetera. Um, I wouldn't call them cozy, um, but, uh, definitely more enjoyable than just standing there. Um, elements of safety is, is a big component of ours, making sure that the, the areas that people do drive and walk or bike are safe in the area for both commuters and people that live uh, and commute within the DDA, um, supporting maintenance. Um, and obviously uphearing certain ordinances with signs and whatnot in the area just to make sure that the DDA is presentable at all times. Yeah.
So, um, the specific funds that, um, sort of came into question, if you wanted to address those, uh?
Yes, so I can go, if the, the first is the tree fund. So this past summer, we invested in kind of a, I don't know if it's quite an overhaul, but it's a phased approach to improve the boulevards. I don't know if you've ever cleaned up the boulevards in previous summers or winters or falls. They were trash collectors, essentially those bushes and whatnot. It was, I got the chance to do that, and it was something I don't wish on anyone, um, based on what was in there. So the thought was to obviously beautify it, um, put bushes, shrubs, and trees that are easy to maintain and survive well, and just make it more beautiful. And so we worked with KPK to get a plan, to get, we suggested a budget. We spent about a thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars this past year to remove the old items and then replace it with something that's cleaner, easier to maintain, um, less of a garbage collector. And so with that, we did plant some new trees, and we, that's where we brought up the request for sixteen thousand two hundred from the tree fund to go towards the trees that were planted in the boulevards this past summer or fall. Yes.
So I'm a little confused. Are you saying the trees have already been planted?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And how much money currently is there in the tree fund?
In the tree funds is Two hundred and thirty thousand. Sorry, I just had that up.
I have it here, which is funny.
There's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, I believe, coming from Glibia as a treat, uh, and an additional donation to the tree funds.
No, no, that's not reflected in.
We, we haven't yet booked, we did start booking the due from developers, but we need to start booking the due from, for the tree funds. Um, I just, I guess just a framing question. Um, we, and I haven't attended the DDA. I've been hearing that the DDA's been talking about making more requests from the township for township funds, like the revolving funds, the tree fund and things. So I guess just as a starting point, you know, the DDA has, I'm seeing four point eight million dollars in cash. Um, and so certainly, I know the main purpose is paying the bonds. Um, and if you're not prepared to answer this, that is okay. When I'm looking at the amended budget for the Um, and if you're not prepared to answer this, that is okay. When I'm looking at the amended budget for the DDA from the current budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, it's about two point five nine nine, so about two point six in revenue. And one point nine in expenditures. And so I guess, you know, just a, a, a starting question is, you know. Why is that not enough money? Um, I'd like to see kind of a budget. Um, I know I'd asked before when you guys, um, presented to us about, um, taking on the renovation of the boulevard for sort of a description of the whole of that plan, like the costs of that. Um, I assumed that there was enough money in the DDA fund to fund all of that, um, particularly when the township's been covering the cost of maintenance, of the improvements that the DDA makes. Something I'll continue to, um, request that the DDA take on is to maintain the improvements if possible. So, um, you know, I appreciate, you may not have all the information there, but I, I, I am a little, um, I am more than a little reluctant to consider allocation of township funds to the DDA. Um, until there's a really demonstrated need for that, um, because there is four point eight million in the bank for the DDA. Um, it's a sizable capture. Um, and so that may be something that could be worked on during budget season. And I believe Ally Norris reached out, said, Bob, Will and Sandy, you may not have been involved, but Ally Norris, our interim finance director, I think, reached out to them, um, as part of the process you set up, Joyce.
That's quite a question, but um, why don't we move on with the presentation?
Okay. I guess my suggestion is any request for funding from the DDA to the township, um, be part of the budget process. That, because, because the DDA's got to come up with their budget, present it to the board on, what is it, March fifth, whatever date that is that we've called the hearing for. And so if there is a request for funds from the township, it would be kind of good to see it all kind of in one cohesive plan.
Okay, so why don't we move on from the tree fund question?
Through the road.
Yeah. So, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, I asked if there was, what was going to be covered with the tree fund because it's described as presentation on tree fund. So I'm hoping there's going to be a presentation, more of a presentation than we've heard so far, on the tree fund.
But the treatment is not overseen by the DDA.
Well.
Tree fund is.
Okay, guys. But I did point this out in the beginning and you insisted on leaving it as it was. This is your title to this action item or discussion item, presentation on tree fund. So there's the implication that we're going to hear some kind of a presentation on the tree fund.
What would you like to know about the tree fund that we can answer for you?
Well, how long it's been in existence, the goals, how trees are assessed, how it compares with tree funds in other municipalities, those kinds of things.
What you think you're asking for is a plan.
Well.
Or an act. Or it's not their fun. That's my objection.
That's fine. I, I don't think it is.
I mean, it's not their fun and I don't think I want to put it on our guest chair to.
But it was.
Don't got it. I, I.
But you called it this. You put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's true.
I raised the question at the beginning. He said, oh, no, we got to keep it for the discussion.
I think they misunderstood what your question was at the beginning, but let, let me say this, Trusty Noel, I think actually your questions about the tree fund will be addressed when the folks who are working on a proposal for the use of the tree fund come forward. And in fact.
I met with Ted Culbertson this afternoon. We had extensive discussion about that group. So she sent me, has sent me some emails about it. I think that is appropriate, but you wanted to keep this on the agenda this way, so we need to hear something about it, presentation on the tree fund.
We can table it too.
Well.
We could table it. I think.
We're not asking for action on the tree fund request. That's what I tried to make clear at the outset, and that's why.
I wanted to make it a discussion item. You didn't want to.
I wanted to leave it as an, uh, an option for us to take action, not on the tree fund question.
That's not what you said.
That is what I said. At the beginning of the meeting, I said, no action expected on the tree fund, that the DDA is expecting to wait until there is a tree fund policy before there would be any kind of action or response to the request.
I think.
What I tried to make clear at the beginning.
So I, I tried to make clear, I think, the title of this is misleading and I think we need to be more precise with our language when we title agenda items. Because.
Why are we making it? We can divide it. That was two things right now. We deal with one. Or do we?
Because this.
Or we could just move on with the presentation and, and read the questions of the tree fund another time.
And, and I, I would just suggest, um, I mean, I, I guess I wonder from the DDA, is there any urgency, um, related to your request for township funds that couldn't happen before April first? You know, because I think we're, we're taking on the policy because we're. Yeah, and not just to the policy, but the public improvement fund, revolving fund, tree fund. I mean, all of those, you know, we're kind of wanting to look at as part of our budget process. So if it works for the DDA, I, I prefer to, you know, see that request in your, as part of your budget request.
Well, except I, I thought I explained this at the beginning, and I know I've explained this in other meetings with you, Jessica, that there is some urgency if the board is going to respond to the DDA's request to have an SAD as.
That's. Oh, yeah. A different. Yeah.
So, so can we turn our attention now to the Dino Drive question?
Yeah, so are we tabling tree fund now?
Well, we said at the beginning of the meeting, we weren't going to take action. I don't understand why this keeps coming back.
No. So we're done discussing the tree fund?
Well, I think we could be if we would move on to talking about Dino Drive.
Promotion to table.
So I. Nothing to table. I, I think of the tree fund as a larger discussion.
I do too.
And how do we?
It was shot. It was on.
No, no, but I don't want to encumber this performance time with our, our going into the larger discussion of how to, how to best spend that money. I, 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 my takeaway is that if they can, the DDA would like to use some of that money for trees along Jackson Boulevard that they've had to replace either in the past or in the future. And, you know, there's a thumb tack on it for me.
Right, exactly.
That's my takeaway from the presentation so far.
Yeah, precisely.
Joyce has something to say.
Oh.
Oh, I was, I was just gonna state, um, I think what, um, Trusty Noel is saying is that because it says tree fund instead of tree fund request, it, it gives the impression that the DDA wants to talk about the tree fund in more of a general context, but I don't, that's not the purpose. So I think there's a word missing.
Yeah, well, I think we need to just strengthen our, the, our agenda items, but that's our issue.
Which does matter.
Yeah, I see, I see your point.
So. Um, I, I am curious about Dino Drive because I understand that that may have, um, that there is a request.
Yes.
Um, the DDA, um, would like to make it support in regards to a special assessment.
Yes. So the, the, at our request conversation, we would like to obviously support the improvement of the roads within the DDA. And obviously there's many, but the initial thought on our side is that we would match or we would contribute fif- up to fifty percent of what the estimate is for the road. Improvement. I don't know if it's a total overhaul or what it is. And so we're committed to giving fifty percent of that, but we need to find the other fifty percent, right? Whether it's Washtenaw County Road Commission doing some sort of contribution possibility. Is it an SAD? Are there other ways that we can find funds to support this to, so improve that our roads in our area?
Have you looked into ask some questions preliminarily? The DDA, like, uh, others?
Well, I think we're aware of the possibility that the Washtenaw County Road Commission would, um, come up with dollars that could be matched to contribute to the improvement of roads. And so that's where our thought is, is that we would want to take advantage of that as soon as possible. And then to continue with this, to get this done hopefully in twenty twenty-four, is to go ahead and find the remaining dollars to support, as an example, Dino Drive.
I'm just being here. Hi. Chair of the Road Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Um. Joyce, Will and I sat down with WCRC, um, last week. Don't ask me today. It's all just kind of flowing together. So we had a conversation with them and we, we have, um, uh, the ARPA funds for this next year and we had to, um, come up with an agreement so we could take advantage of some state funds. I'm just boiling this down. So, um, we did talk about, um, the grant that every, you know, there's a yearly grant and that, that grant is, um, when we have an agreement with the, the road commission, that grant is applied.
Okay.
It's not a matching. They call it matching, but you know, I wish we could get five hundred thousand dollars out of them. Um, so that's a part of it. Now, another thing that we did talk about was, and I know that in here we talk, um, we list the. Uh, let's see, improvement revolving fund. Okay, so let's clear that up. I've been working hard to figure that mess out along with Jessica. So we spent hours trying to go through the language and make sure the funds were, you know, allocated properly. It's over with Ally. We gave up and said, Ally, you, you take care of that.
We didn't give up. There's some.
Well.
Historical accounting.
As far as us trying to figure out everything. That's what we gave up, but Ally is working on that. So that's kind of on hold and, um. What was the other thing, um, Joyce, um? Oh, I'm trying to think of in the WCRC. There was a point. I've had too much sugar today. We had our holiday party, so. We'll get it placed. Um.
I think those were the two major ones.
Yes, um.
The, you know, we talked about, well, the special assessment history.
Oh, yes, that was the other thing. So, um, in the Road Advisory Committee, we are working on funding for the next round. The ten, ten year SAD had ended, as we all know. We used ARPA funds last year, ARPA funds this year. So, um, we have a subcommittee that has been working on a millage and we have to create a plan and how that's, um, the projects, the road projects and a, it's going to be more than a one-year plan regarding that. So, um, it had been mentioned that if we impose a special assessment on, or have special assessments in general or a neighborhood, and then a year or two later that we have a millage to cover all the roads, how are those. Parcel. Parcel owners going to feel, other than we did also decide that, um, if we did do a SAD or in any way that we would disclose that. In a couple of years, this is the plan. I mean, that may change, but this is the plan. So just for you to be aware of that with Dino Drive. And any other road.
The, the village, is that all roads in South Township or would that be just?
It would not be private. Now, we're, we're still working on the plan, so it's not set in stone. So not private, of course. Um, they have to take care of their own. And any road that, let's say they're gravel and they want to go to, or have an uplift to pave, then that is where a SAD would come in. But just the regular, and we did talk with WCRC about it and they're going to try and help us, but it would, it's, it's going to be a long process, but.
With that, would, is in your, uh, what you're, the plan you're creating, does it include like the business, like the, the medis and the Dinos and?
Yes, and see, that, that brought me to another question regarding the DDA district or the DDA, um, area. And because there's things that you want to do, the DDA wants to do, and how does the, the township, how do we work together?
Right.
And we, we're kind of disjointed. And so that, this has brought up a lot of questions, which is really good because now we can get all on the same page.
Yes.
So, um, yeah, so if you want to take care of your own roads, I guess they could do that. I don't know. See, that's, I don't know.
Efficient. But if you do a special assessment this week, it's a delineated area, as most of us know, because we've had quite a few. Only those people pay. If, if you do a township-wide village, which you did allude to this, everybody pays and they'd be paying double. You really don't want to do that to anybody in the township. No one. So we have to think ahead.
I mean, there's been SADs done in the township to pave roads and, you know, if we were to, I mean, how far do we want to go back in terms of sort of crediting people? Besides which, a township-wide millage or SAD, whatever funding mechanism it is, is to pay for all the roads that are included in whatever list that would be for the township. So we don't want to exclude the folks on a specific SAD from that because they also benefit from those other road improvement.
Right, and the SAD would be specific to, say, Dino Drive business owners, right? The millage that they would be, business owners would be paying to the millage as well, right? And that covers all roads, so.
See, maybe they pay double. And their roads would be in the, the list somewhere.
Well, if, if there was a duplication in the list and, you know, I, it's, I, I think there's a lot of things to weigh. I mean, obviously, if we did, if we move forward with a, an SAD for Dino Drive, for example, for half the cost of that. Then that would mean that that project is going forward in the next construction season if we move.
Right.
If, if you wait until this other, um, revenue stream, whatever form it takes, comes into effect, as soon as that anything would happen on, on Dino Drive would be twenty twenty-five and could be quite a few years further out.
So I am just letting you know.
Sure, yeah.
So we're all on the same page.
Yeah. I know, we, we want to work together.
Yeah. And I think, I think there's a lot of, like, you know, good energy and intention to kind of roads planning. Um, also, again, like in the budget process, you know, it, it's not just fun for ninety-four. If the DDA says, hey, you know, we don't have enough money, here's why. You're going to have to demonstrate that to me because you have a ton of money. Um, okay, and then, you know, here are the additional requests, but also collaborating, you know, um, on the roads planning, I think is really important. I want to get into Dino Drive. My, my understanding from what Will has shared with me in advance of this meeting was that, if I say this not quite right, tell me, but my understanding is that there's some time sensitivity that the DDA had kind of felt out the interest of the property owners along the Dino Drive about if they might be interested in an SAD. Because typically we require, you know, fifty-one percent at least, hopefully more, um, when we have go-by, um, petition. But that there wasn't much interest or I don't know what the engagement is. So I want to hear a little bit, and it may be, I don't know, Bob or somebody, but kind of what has the engagement been? Um, have they been surveyed? Has there been a meeting? Has there been an attempt to get a petition of the property owners, um, for a special assessment? Thank you, Bob.
I'm trying to sit in the back here. If you don't know me, I'm Bob Stites and the Chair of the DDA. And Jennifer's our PR expert, so we better speak. But Dino Drive is interesting. We did mail them trying to get the row, if you've been down Dino Drive and there's a park at the end, so that's important too, to have a nice, um, street. Um, we did talk to all of them at least three times through the mail and then personally about twel- two times. We had three people actually write us checks to start gathering money. The, the idea at first was that the DDA would pay half and we'd collect half voluntarily, which didn't happen. So we're back to square one and we know that the revolving fund that actually started from April Drive back in two thousand eight, which you, you looked up. That money was funded. It started with DDA money, the revolving fund, and then we captured the money back. And it's, it's been there. So that's, that's why we thought we could use it.
Yeah, and Bob, I think we need to sit down, um, with our plant Moran staff, Sandy, everybody to go over this because, because when I go back, the assessments are still in the revolving fund from April Drive in Jackson Plaza.
Okay, well, I was on the board then. We gave the money to get the project started. I know there's a disagreement about what happened, but that's my recollection of what happened.
Yeah, I'm just saying what's in the.
So, so we thought that because the revolving fund hasn't been used since then, nor the tree fund since it was started, we could ask to use part of the, those funds to finish Dino Drive. That we've been working on for at least three years. And then collect some of the money from the tree fund, which again, the tree fund was funded, a lot of it was funded before IHA was built, but a lot of it came from that and then you've got the new money going in there. So we thought that's because again, a lot of the money from the tree fund came from the DDA area, we could use it back in the DDA. So we're just asking for a little bit of it. But I think it is good to show some flow of those funds to use them and maybe. But I think it is good to show some flow of those funds to use them and maybe, you know, it's it's under your control. You guys got to come up with the you know, the guidance on how to use it, but that's what that's what we're requesting is wanting for the DDA from the revolving fund and the tree fund as well.
And are you requesting that the township impose a a special assessment district on Dino Drive?
I, we're not, we're not, we're not.
That is the motion that was made by.
It's one option. It's definitely one option.
I mean, that that's the thing that I think is most time sensitive and I and I would just say again, you know, I would be hard pressed to, you know, support imposition of a special assessment on property owners who aren't down with it, right? And so the easiest way to know that people are on board is to get at least fifty-one percent. I I'd be interested.
I don't think that's going to happen.
And why is that, do you think?
I think they think that they pay enough taxes that their road should be paid for. That's what I think. That's what, that's what they think. So I I think they're actually expecting a special assessment. That's what they're, they're actually waiting for, so.
It's what has been done in other side roads off of Jackson Boulevard. We've imposed, we haven't, we haven't treated them as like a neighborhood S A D where someone has to go around with a petition. We've done it through the other method, which is the township board can basically vote to impose an S A D. Yes, impose an S A D on a particular area for a particular improvement. It's one of the options that's available.
It is, but.
Come back with an objection petition of twenty percent signatures and that would squash them.
Yeah, it is a.
We can't, we can't do a special, you guys do the special, we didn't do that.
Right, I'm just saying, I'd be hard pressed to impose it without people wanting it imposed.
After three years, I think they they're almost expected, so. But that's up to you guys.
So we've been wrestling, so the reason that this is coming to the board is with the request is because the board does have that power to impose an S A D. The DDA board does not have that power. And so that's why the DDA board made a motion to request that the the township board impose an S A D. My sense is, I think, that we probably talked about this enough for this evening. I don't sense that we're ready to move forward.
I have some questions for them.
Oh, if there's more questions, please go forward.
How many property owners did you actually talk to?
I would say twenty-eight.
Out of how many? What's the total?
About thirty on that. Yeah, but some are owned by the same entity, if you look at them, but.
I contacted everyone.
Yeah, I mean, everybody was there, but.
So was it a meeting or?
No, it was three ladders and then a bunch of visits. And again, we've got a large company at the end with large trucks and they 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 were willing to buck up. They were going to pay pay more than the average. We looked at collecting thirty-five hundred dollars from each property owner to pay the other half.
Thirty-five hundred from each property owner for?
Covered at the time, which was two thousand nineteen, I think. So I'm sure it's a lot more now, but.
Twenty twenty-one, I thought, when you were talking.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
What was the estimate? How much the whole?
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Little less than that.
A question for Joyce and Jillian and Will. Where does Dino Drive, I mean, later on in our agenda, we're looking at, you know, a contract with W C R C. I know you guys have talked about it. Where does Dino Drive fit in the road commission's priority list?
Well, they were basically taking the last ten year SAD and whatever roads were in that next year. I mean, we have it laid out and those are only for collector roads. There's no other roads included. They were just looking at that.
They weren't looking at the full universe?
No, no, but we, no, because that wasn't the plan. It was easier to just go by what we had already been doing. But to them, right.
Okay, but given that we're no longer bound by that township-wide S A D since that's done, is there any reason that the planning shouldn't be more universal?
Well, this was just a kind of a preliminary meeting because we needed to have some type of a potential agreement, I guess agreement that could be changed. They made. Yeah, and we just needed it in place by the end of this year for the ARPA funds and then the state.
Yeah, the revenue sharing.
The revenue sharing, thank you.
So so back, so to to answer your question, this is the document that the road commission provided, which is actually based on the plan that the township developed back in two thousand thirteen. And it had a schedule of road maintenance for roads throughout the township. And so they used our own schedule to come up with what would be the next roads due. And actually, the, this is an agenda item later on our agenda tonight. The roads that are identified in that agreement are roads from which people have been contacting the township for the past few years complaining about the quality of their roads. So I I think, you know, anecdotal evidence supports that those roads that they put forward in the agreement are due for maintenance.
And and I I I think that makes sense, Will. I'm just thinking that, you know, later on in the agenda with the agreement, you know, there may be room for it to be amended in the future. I'm just saying, I I guess what I'm interested in is sort of a kind of expert assessment from the road commission, whoever it is, about which roads really need it. Because if the property owners on Dino Drive aren't interested in improving their own road, then, you know, I defer to the road commission to say, you know, this road really needs it or it doesn't.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think we could definitely make a request of the road commission to take a look at the road and provide some type of an assessment. Even with.
Kind of all the roads.
Yeah, the item that's on the agenda tonight, in our conversation, they also anticipated another agreement into next year.
Supplement, okay.
Yeah, to supplement what we have here.
Okay, that makes sense.
One of the benefits of the agreement is that it would qualify the township for whatever matching funds the road commission has for us this year. They were estimating in that meeting that it would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So if we chose, we could use the match to pay for close to half of the cost of Dino Drive and then the DDA would pay the other half. That is one option that we did.
And and I would just want some data to support that Dino Drive's a priority over the many, many other roads.
Why not be great?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, the property owners aren't saying they want it. There's a lot of roads that need improvement. I I defer to the road commission.
If we use road commission funds, as you just suggested as a possibility, aren't we pulling it away from some other potential sources?
It's a choice. It's absolutely a choice. But I think we probably covered this as much as we need to tonight because I don't sense we're going to take any action. Thank you very much, Jennifer and other members of the DDA board who were present this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer and Bob, and I really encourage you guys to get involved in the budget process. I think that we can, okay, good.
Yeah, we'll we'll be talking about the DDA budget between now and the eighteenth because we have to have at least a preliminary turned in. All right, well, thank you very much. Let's move on. We have another topic here. This is. You want to introduce it before you?
No, no, I may, no, in fact, I have a vested interest in Drive IQ and I think it's appropriate that I prove myself and abstain from the vote. So just to keep everything on the up and up, so. Call me when I'm, I'll be in the sound room or whatever that is.
There's coffee cake.
We don't think this. Coffee cake in the bag. Maybe gone, but it'll hurry up.
I just want to welcome Steve Woodward here from Drive IQ. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thanks for the time.
So this is actually, Jessica, this is your agenda item. I don't want to presume to introduce it.
Sure, I'm happy to introduce this. This is something we've had a conversation about for quite some time. I've had an interest in kind of improving our records retention, both hard copy and digital. And with the added capacity of our in-house I T director, Chris Bailey, we've been able to kind of step back and look at like the future of where we might be able to go. The manager, I T director and I have have talked about this. Steve Woodward came out for about four hours. We had a good walkthrough township hall. And I really support this potential scope of work. It is a fiscal impact of forty-seven hundred dollars from the general fund. The contract and addendum has been reviewed and approved by our township attorney. And to be clear, this would be to develop a scope of work, as we often have experts in the field develop a scope of work that we then later decide to budget and bid out. That's what we would be doing here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Jessica. Yeah, I'm Steve Woodward. I'm the Chief Innovation Officer of Drive IQ. We're a Sow Township business just down the road here on Jackson Road. And as Jessica said, we came in and discussed with Chris, the I T director, and Joyce and and Jessica and really interviewed some folks around the building here to kind of understand what is kind of loosely being branded Project Paperless. The idea is, you know, the township really has a desire to improve efficiency for residents, introduce more accountability and things like that, particularly around electronic records management. And in fact, that there's a lot of paper in the building that could easily be turned into electronic records and then maintained that way for higher efficiency, longer-term costs, freeing up space around the building, lots of other good reasons. And talking with folks here in the township, you know, that was kind of the desire, but there's a lot of moving parts to that. Some of the departments have made strides already, others haven't. Chris Bailey, the I T director, is also executing some other things I'm sure the board has talked about about around I T improvements to kind of support the initiative of using more SharePoint, using more electronic documents, which is what Drive IQ are experts in. And we thought we could come in and help with that assessment. The basic idea being, as Jessica mentioned, first step is because the township desires a fixed bid, so you know what you're voting on, how much you're getting into financial impact for the bigger project. Let's start with a statement of work, kind of a consulting engagement to build that statement of work and the project plan out so that whether then the township decides to bid that out to multiple firms, wherever you go from there, you'll have a good idea of what it's going to take and what it's going to cost, whether you end up choosing to engage with Drive IQ or another local business to actually perform the work. So that's really the the tip of the proposal is kind of this initial phase to really sit down and do some deep interviews, understand some business processes, do some prioritization as far as what the really first up and second up processes that provide the most value to the residents of the township are, document all that and let the board really know what the bigger scope of project would look like. So really, that's the the basic idea, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the project.
Are there questions from members of the board?
I have one. Have you ever contacted the state as to whether this can be done? The record retention schedules. Tell what, how many years, what we have to say. Have you ever talked with anyone?
We have not talked with the state directly. I mean, we are aware of the records retention and the rules that are involved. It's the kind of things we do commercially all the time. But we have not kind of hacked the state directly regarding that.
Of working with municipalities, perhaps that would be good to talk with someone. So when you're making presentations, you know just what, you know, what to do.
And and Don, I just want to assure you, that's something that will be controlling this entire thing, are the laws of Michigan and the records retention schedule. It's a matter of how do we kind of program and automate some of that.
And I'll just add to that quickly. I mean, a big part of that is to meet the retention schedules, usually it's a type of document or a process or the outcome of the document, what type of document is it? And then that feeds into what the retention schedules might be, whether it's permanently retained or for seven years and things.
The schedule, I know of that. I just wondered if you've talked with anyone, how, what you people do, how it can fit in or if it can fit in, you know.
We we think our part of it would be to identify the different types of documents and classify them so that they can be retained for the correct schedule. But that's great feedback to do some more research against what the state requires.
So questions.
So about how long will this take to develop the scope of work?
Uh, yeah, it was in the the document. I'd have to call it up to to remember, but.
We said, I think you said thirty days.
Yeah, there was a period of time, but less hours. There'll be a period where we'll spend some time here on site reviewing the information with the team and then providing proposal within a fixed amount of time. And it's called out in the document. I apologize.
Yeah, no, anticipated project start date within two weeks after executing the scope of work and one calendar month is the estimate. So I think with the holidays and Chris doing the network refresh, we'll schedule around that a little bit, but.
Next year, closest to the end of January or so.
Perfect, yeah.
And and do you foresee anything, have you worked with municipalities and if not, is there anything about us being a you know, a township under Michigan law that would, you know, present hurdles or to you or your sense of that?
I don't know of any hurdles and we don't typically do a lot of township business. In particular, we do a lot of enterprise things, very large organizations, very large projects. But since we're a local business, we thought that was, you know, interesting to help out the township and then maybe even look at others as there are, you know, twelve hundred and some townships in the state of Michigan. But to date, no, we have not done a township project like this before.
And I I think it's a great opportunity, John, to like, kind of work with somebody who's got the expertise and.
I'm going to support it. I'd be getting support. I'm ready to move it.
So moved by Riser, the model motion, support by Clintop to approve the attached contract and addendum with Drive IQ to develop a scope of work for Project Paperless and to authorize up to four thousand seven hundred of general fund one oh one and one oh one. Is there further discussion? Please call the roll.
Clintop, yes. Brazil, stained. Carrie, yes. Noel, yes. Riser?
Yes.
Hathway?
Yes.
Palmer, yes. Motion adopted. Six zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks, John, folks.
Thank you, thank you.
That brings us to.
Steve, would you mind getting Mark? Thank you.
This website uses cookies to keep track of this. All right, that brings us to J three. This is the Land Preservation Commission appointments. This was first brought forward for the board consideration back in October. Postponed action so that we could deal with a number of different questions. And one item is still sort of pending, which I'd noted, and that is the reappointment of trustee Riser as the board trustees representative. We're putting that on hold to look at how staffing teams, Chris Chang coming on board, will impact staffing for the L P C. And so this motion, this is simply to reappoint Marty Mayo, Will Weber and Liz Wiseman to three-year terms and Tim Redmond to a two-year term on the Land Preservation Commission commencing on December twelve, twenty twenty-three. That's that's the motion. I would make the motion. Is there a second?
Like to split the appointments? It's for a cleaner record so that we can better keep up.
Cleaner record?
You know, let's just do it. We can just do it. It's fine.
Do we really need to split the appointments? Are we really going to to parse each appointment in such a manner that we need to vote on each of them individually?
I I just printed this out, just again, it's a broader thing, as we all know, trying to get our records here. So if you look here in green are the seats that are open here. I support all of these people, appreciate their service. I just want to note the ordinance is three years and it's supposed to be staggered so that three seats expire one year and three seats the next year. And so I would suggest, you know, it's, I guess it's okay to do the two-year. I'd prefer to do a four-year if we're going to stagger, but the ordinance calls out three-year appointments. So I'd just like to take them one by one.
I understand that that's how you would like to do it. I don't see the necessity for doing it.
So I'll I'll make a motion to appoint Marty Mayo to a three-year term to the Land Preservation Commission commencing on December twelve, twenty twenty-three. I'll support.
All right, we have a motion and it has been supported. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, why don't you proceed? You seem to have a pattern in mind.
Yeah, I have a question. Three-year term, so then, who are the other, Tim Redman? Three-year term, so then who are the other? Tim Redmond and who else is on that?
Weber, Wiseman, and Redmond.
Yeah. Who else is on the committee? I mean, because of the two, three-year terms?
And not everyone is due to be reappointed. Their terms are not up at this time.
At the same time.
So we're only dealing with those whose terms are up.
Okay, and then I'll I'll make a motion to appoint Will Weber to the seat of resident and botanist slash zoologist for a three-year term commencing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I will support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, would you like to proceed?
And then, Will, what is your preference on Liz and Tim, the staggering? When we have three-year terms, I appreciate we want to stagger. I'm a little uncomfortable giving somebody less than the number of years required in the ordinance. I'd be more comfortable going over three if you want to stagger.
Can you do that?
Well, this this came up with the Planning Commission. This came up before when we were talking in Planning Commission, and there was some minimum number of years. So the ordinance says three-year term. I'm uncomfortable appointing somebody to a two-year term.
Oh, I see.
If you need a stagger, I'd like to go above three instead of below three.
I thought you were proposing going above a four-year, going going above a three-year term.
I am. So what I'm saying is, no, no, what I'm saying is the ordinance requires three-year terms. Will has proposed here to give someone a two-year term. That's not a thing. And more importantly than it not being a thing is it's it, I want to, I don't want to give somebody less than what the ordinance requires. So if we're going to give somebody something different, I'd rather give them more time, more than three years rather than less than.
Is there a reasonable way you want to go to?
It was to reestablish some of the staggering, which is a request that actually came from the clerk.
Which I'd, I maybe we could do it by going to four years, is what I'm saying. So you can get the staggering.
Generally, um, yeah, generally you would go fewer.
You would go fewer?
Yes, okay. Because that, you know, when you look at the statutes, when they're talking about staggering, it's you can appoint someone for a one-year or a two-year or the full three in order to establish the stagger. It never says you can appoint someone for four or five.
Okay.
So I would recommend that if you're doing a different term, that it be less than the three.
So you think that's okay?
I do. I I think it's more appropriate than more.
Okay, cool. So, all right, I support that.
So the ordinance for the LPC is?
It's three years.
But it's not set for stagger.
It is, but we got off and that's what we're.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. That's why it's what's confusing. That's why I was asking who was already on there.
Most, most of the committees that we established in the township, their original appointments were staggered with the expectation that there would be no need to reestablish staggering later. So they say if you're reappointing someone and reappoint them to this full term, whatever it is, that's the expectation. So whatever we do, we're going to be sort of pushing against language in our ordinance.
So we're getting back to following the rules.
Trying to.
That's what we're going for.
Yeah, and and the ordinance does say that when you're when you're starting the staggering, you're going to do a couple for two years and and the rest for three. So I think if we're going to reestablish, let's just use the pattern that we already have in place.
Okay, good. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Liz Wiseman for a term of three years starting December twelfth, twenty-three.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You want to do Tim Redmond too?
Sure. A motion to appoint Tim Redmond to a two-year term on the LPC commencing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so who's the other resident or I mean?
Can I get that in order?
LPC.
Sure. Am I to continue serving in the interim until we decide who the permanent board rep's going to be?
Yeah, it's silent on that. I mean, the PC says, but I think that's, I think that makes sense. Do you want to make a motion?
Count, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, you know.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to have John Riser continue to serve as the board rep, the the board seat to the LPC through February twenty-eight.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
I support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, well, that's confirmed. All right, that brings us to item J four. This is the Compensation Commission appointment. I have heard from some people who have a suggestion of something different than what I have put forward as my appointment, Monica Knowles. And so obviously there will be some discussion, but I do want to remind everyone, and I think the county attorney can confirm this, if that by statute, the Compensation Commission appointments are appointed by the supervisor with confirmation by vote of the Board of Trustees. So I appreciate, well, I appreciate suggestions of alternatives. This is the person, Monica Knowles, whom I'm putting forward for reappointment to a full term on the Compensation Commission. So that is the question before us this evening.
We'll vote it up or down.
Yep.
Will, do you want to make a statement? Do you want to?
Absolutely.
So you've got Monica Knowles. How much, how many times has she been on the Compensation Committee?
Well, we created the Compensation Commission in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so that's a new commission.
It's a relatively new commission. And at the time that we created it, we created it with staggered terms, which is the requirement. And Monica's term was one of the shorter ones. It's ending or it ended like a week or so ago. And so we now are in the position of considering her reappointment to a full term, which is what the ordinance and the statute contemplate in terms of the appointment schedule.
Okay, and is there, and we said you had another applicant? I I don't know either of them.
It's in the correspondence.
Yeah, but I mean, I I don't know either of them, either of them personally.
I got your resume. I think, I think.
Thank you for pointing that out.
She's, she's.
That's good.
She's here tonight.
Okay, I mean, is there any reason why she should be considered?
Well, I did consider, her name is Judy Monk. Yes, and I talked with Judy on the phone. I'm sorry, didn't know that that was you out there. I would have come up and and greeted you in person. But I did talk with Judy and I, looking at her resume that she provided, I think Judy would be, you know, great to either add to the Compensation Commission at a later time if there's a vacancy or some other capacity. She has experience from the other committee where she lived prior to moving to Silo Township that I think would make her a good candidate to serve in a variety of different ways.
Served on a Compensation Commission.
Yeah, so so one, one of the places that she could serve is on the Compensation Commission. I don't view the current situation as a vacancy so much as a reappointment to the Compensation Commission.
Okay, so you're just, I'm trying to understand the 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 selection criteria. So your selection criteria is it's not a vacancy, it's a reappointment.
Correct. And 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 I've tried to explain this in other contexts, and I don't know, maybe you weren't at the meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Because, well, I know you were feeling ill last week, but I tried to explain.
Not in good shape.
Right, yes. Well, I'm glad that you're, I'm glad that you're, I'm glad that you're feeling better tonight, and I'm sorry that you missed it, but what I explained on our last meeting and 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 in other conversations is that generally speaking, if I am in looking at a situation where we have somebody who's served well on a board of commission and they're and they're willing to serve for another term, that I tend to favor reappointment as opposed to creating as an open seat, as a vacancy. So my preference is if someone's doing a good job is and they want to continue serving is to reappoint them. And that's the way I'm approaching it.
That's really the criteria is it's more the reappointment, it's not so much, I didn't hear anything about skill sets or anything.
Yeah, no, no, nothing, it's nothing against, nothing against Judy or or qualifications. In fact, I'm I'm hoping very much to find a a good place to to put forward as a.
If I could add, since since you're talking about me, I do want to clarify two things is that we all received an email suggesting there were vacancies and openings and encouraged residents to apply. So that was one encouraging signal that says there was these openings. Secondly, I came here to a meeting and again, we were verbally encouraged to pursue and invest our time, et cetera. Thus, I was encouraged to do it. I was impressed by what I saw and the investment that people were making in our community. I care about it a great deal, and I think it's worth not only my time and investment, but many others. Thus, I applied. I will say, Mr. Hathaway, I did call him. He spoke to me. I appreciate it. He asked some questions. He did say that there were no openings, which struck me as puzzling, I think, would be my answer. He was professional, respectful, all those things. Nothing about that. But it was puzzling because what he did encourage me to do was to run for office. And I'm not saying that that's a bad option at all, but I applied to be part of these commissions or committees, which is what I was prompted to do by the letter and by what was said here. So I just want to represent all those people that might have gotten that same message I did that are motivated also to represent their community and invest their volunteer time and their education and their talents and their experiences and encourage that. But when you're told no, that is a discouraging message. And I'm sure you did not mean it to be a discouraging message at all, all due respect. But it is. When people reach out, take the time to apply, take the time to come, and then be told it's a done deal, there is no opening, and there aren't any openings. I don't know what message to take back to my neighbors, to other people who want to invest in their communities. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate all of your service, elected and unelected people. I really appreciate because it's a wonderful community and it's worth investing time and talent in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have no openings whatsoever?
Well, it's that's not exactly the.
That is the message you communicated to me.
Remember, Judy, we talked about potential vacancies on committees that you actually weren't that interested.
You never suggested I go and look at these others. You suggested that when something.
The Roads Advisory Committee where you were not interested in the Roads Advisory.
So I that, this was not meant to be a back, but it's just, anyway, think about the message you're sending to many people who do want to spend.
Okay, well, in any case, Mark, you have more questions?
Yeah, so 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 again, are there, are there today, right now, current openings that are available? It's a binary question. It's a yes or no. My mind is yes or.
She applied to PC, DVA, and Compensation Commission. The one opening after our last meeting was Compensation Commission.
Right, so that's the only opening that's open right now. That's the only.
And and roads, there's some openings on.
There are other openings.
Well, there currently are vacancies on roads.
Vacancies, that's what I'm saying, there are vacancies.
Correct. And and I think part of this is a difference in interpretation, and this is part, and I don't know what communications, you know, have gone out other than the ones that I sent out. But the ones that I sent out, I tried to identify places where we would welcome, you know, applications in particular because we had vacancies. What I'd consider to be a vacancy is an empty seat. I don't consider someone who's in a seat being, you know, interested in reappointment as a vacancy. I consider that a reappointment.
I'll just, you know, you know, you guys know me, I just lay it in the line. I mean, I got that degree. When I came on this board, I did this as to serve, right? I mean, this, there's no, there's no glory here, right? I'm doing this to help out, to help out Silo Township, as we all know. We have other constituents out there in the group that are doing the same thing. And it's, it is a little frustrating that they're, hey, I'm taking my time, I'm going to curve it. It's not like I'm, you know, there is no Silo private jet. I thought there was. There is no Silo private jet. So they're not getting access to the private jet.
The vice chair got up and touched.
Yes, so you get a key to the door. I think it's about, because I don't want to get. So.
Can I just add something? When the first time.
Other people want to talk to.
I understand, but I, Mark was asking some questions of me and I want to respond because I I I I think there's a piece of information that may be helpful. First time I heard about a vacancy in Silo Township years ago, I applied. I put my name in to be actually on the Land Preservation Commission. And the word that came back to me was, I'm really sorry. We had a number of people put their names in, and there's someone who's so qualified to be on the LPC that we're going to appoint that person, but we'll keep you in mind because, you know, it's good to know that you're interested in serving. And a couple of months later, I was appointed to the Planning Commission. So that's, it's just, you know, the answer of not at this time, but we want to, and we're so glad to have your information. We want to appoint you. We want to find a good place to, you know, for you to, you know, serve the township. That's not, that's not necessarily a diss.
Well, I I let me finish my 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 thought train and then I'll I'll hand it over to to everyone else. Because number one, I just want to express that I totally get that and understand that very wholeheartedly. And we need to recognize it and encourage it. Where I I, however, I also understand you have somebody who's also volunteered their time and we're reappointing. They're they're really in the same bucket, really. I mean, if you think about it, they're no, they're no different, right? So I think maybe some of it sounds like there was just a loss of of translation here. We had these openings. Maybe that could have been articulated better. I wasn't part of the conversation. But I can understand the frustration. It would be, I think the ideal scenario would be, hey, if we've got an opening and you have a wonderful person here that's that's open to it, there'll be a trustee available on on November, just so you know. There is a seat here that will be available. So so that would be, that'd be good. I like to get, I I I don't have to swap one for the other. That's no good either. And I frustrate Monica, who's been here and given her time. But on the other hand, I don't want to discourage a person.
Well, and I tried to be as encouraging as I could be.
Well, but you were. Well, I'm just saying that if it was all one of that, well, I'm just saying, but I heard, I didn't hear encouraging. Maybe you tried. I'm not saying you didn't try. But I'm saying the end result maybe wasn't that.
The vice chair would have some insight.
So so is there an opportunity where, bring a resolution, is there an opportunity where you have an opening that this wonderful person would love to come and join that and and bring value to the Silo Township? You said there's a Roads Commission and something else, or is it just Roads Commission or?
Yeah, and and we'll talk about.
Why don't we, why don't we not try and solve this at the board table tonight?
Always, let's table it.
Okay, we can table it. All right, all right, I'm just.
No, I'm not saying, no, 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 you are misunderstanding what I'm saying. Let's not try and solve where we're going to find a place for Judy to serve.
We could table this item. We could.
Except that would violate the law.
Me. Okay, I'd like to say something. I want to say, first of all, Monica Knowles, thank you for your service. In twenty twenty-one, I brought forth the ordinance to create the Compensation Commission in Silo Township as part of a good governance reform because prior to that, the board was setting their own salaries. And in the last few years, there's been so much growth and they did a great job. I also want to note in the reference sheet here about the seats that are available, and I would say there are seats. Once a person has sat in a seat, this is not Jessica's seat, this is just a seat. If I leave, it's vacant. There are five registered electors. Both Monica, Judy, anybody else that the supervisor might appoint to the Compensation Commission. I verify that they're registered electors. You'll see the design of the statute and the code is that terms are five years and they're staggered so that one-fifth of the seats expire each year. There's no explicit prohibition in the statute to say there are term limits, this and that. I think that's because it's evident that the purpose of the statute with this staggering is to have a. is to have a fresh voice once a year on the Compensation Commission. So this appointment of somebody who's already been on the Compensation Commission, particularly concurrently um seems to run contrary to that intent. The other thing I want to note is, um, and I just want to say, I'll be um voting against um this. Uh, I will not be confirming the supervisor's appointment of Monica Knowles um because of of the the process here. I do want to um encourage the supervisor to appoint people who are new. I also want to talk about the qualifications. Um, for example, somebody who's been an elected trustee on the Compensation Commission, whether it's Judy, whether it's anybody else, having fresh voices in here is important. I would also note, Will, the difference with which you, by by the nominations you brought in process from the nominations from Planning Commission, where you had the Planning Commission Chair, the other planning commissioners, you know, you weighed heavily on their opinion of the nominees that you brought forth, and then when we have the opinion of the vice chair of the Compensation Commission um that you run contrary to. So I would just say it's inconsistent. And again, thank you, Monica, for your service, but I won't be supporting uh the reappointment of of Monica Rosignol.
Okay, so Will and I have already had this discussion, but I'm going to say some things for the benefit of the board and the audience. Once again
The public.
Oh, yeah. Once again, I have major process concerns, I agree with Jessica on that issue. We have a highly qualified new applicant who has prior township board experience as a trustee and experience on a Compensation Commission in another community. That is valuable experience, we should embrace that. And I'm just shocked, so I want to say also, educationally, she has a master's degree in economics, experience in marketing. Um, you did not include
Monica or you
No, 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 you did not include Monica's resume in our packet. We have three trustees who are new and have never seen Monica's resume. So the board has to weigh this in deciding on your nomination. I will not be supporting your nomination for Monica Knowles. And I will encourage board members who have concerns about the way this has been handled to vote no. And let the supervisor come back at our next meeting with a new nominee, hopefully it would be Judy.
Well, I went back and I sat in most of the Compensation Commission meetings. So this was um in 2021, when I was not a trustee at the time. Um, of course, as you know, it's only been a year. And I did, um, I watched the very first meeting. It was about appointing chairs and, you know, officers and and whatnot. And then I went to the very last meeting, which was December seventeen, twenty twenty-one. And what I noticed is um there was Kathleen Brandt, John Boyd, Monica Knowles, Spalding Clark, and Erwin Martin. And when they were breaking apart the different uh the trustees and then the three officers, I noticed when it came to the clerk and supervisor positions, the criteria was different. So for the supervisor, it was part-time position, forty to forty-five, five thousand. Um, and what they had done, some of them, I think Kathleen Brandt brought most of the um data, which was very just right across the board, okay, this is what we found in the state level, blah, 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 and this is and then they weighed how many hours, and even though they threw that out, benefits, they threw that out because it's just about salary. So when it came to the supervisor position, Monica well, they decided forty to forty-five thousand for supervisor. John Boyd said, that's pretty high for state compensation because the the average is thirty-eight thousand. Erwin says, oh, it's okay, it's a, um, even though it's um seventy-five percent above a a percentile. Monica agreed with Erwin, they voted yes, but when it came to the clerk, there was different criteria. Well, she doesn't have to do, you know, what she, everything that she does, it doesn't, you know, that's just her choice and whatnot. And they voted, they actually voted to lower the clerk's salary. Erwin, Monica, and um Spalding Clark. John and Kathleen voted to keep it the same, actually Kathleen asked for it to be higher. So that that really concerned me that there was bias, at least that's what it seemed like. And then at this past Compensation Commission, it was the same thing. Well, you know, the supervisor puts in all these extra hours and, you know, he does a lot of different things. But when it came to the trustees that put in a ton of hours, oh, no, that's their choice. So I will be voting no for Monica, based on the bias.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from you, I mean, if you've been here for a long time, I I'm a new kid in the block here, I'd love to hear your view of the world.
First of all, we always offered to an existing appointee the option. If they wanted to continue, that was number one step we've always taken. And if they said no, we hope that we had some other people who had expressed an interest in, you know, serving. That, I mean, it seems like we're changing so many things that have worked, not that you shouldn't look at a process. But I know Monica, she's very well qualified. Uh, I also can see that Judy's very well qualified, so the qualifications are equal in my book. And if Monica said she would like to continue, well, I mean, that's, I guess that's where we are at this
Trustee Riser?
I did not have my hand up.
I know, I just wanted to know if you wanted to say anything, you don't have to say anything.
I I I have a question for the township attorney, and that's whether this has to be done tonight, or whether we can uh let this percolate? Maybe see the uh resumes of both, maybe want to want to do it, maybe want to want to withdraw? Uh, what are options are for having to do this tonight?
Well, the statute does require that um subsequent members shall be appointed within thirty days after a term expires or a vacancy occurs. So there is a deadline. And it looks like the it looks like the term expired on the twenty-third of November, so unless you want to have a special meeting between today and the twenty-second of December, there should be someone appointed.
And and I would just say Will has known about this, has said there would be a nominee, could have brought it to an earlier meeting, chose not to. And in fact, you know, said, I have a nominee I'll be bringing. Uh, so Mariah, my next question is, what is the penalty if we do not? If we do nothing? What is the penalty or ramifications to the board if we um do not? I I understand that the super, is it that the appointment must happen or the confirmation must happen?
I'm not suggesting you violate the law, by the way.
I what I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm I'm asking, because because it looks like maybe the appointment has happened. But maybe what would
No, the appointment is when the person is is placed in the position.
Okay.
So the the supervisor appoints people subject to approval by the rest of you.
The 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 language in it is that uh it changes from one of the end to the other, which is something that came up at our last meeting, but in this case, the language says appointed by the supervisor confirmed by a vote of the board of trustees.
Correct.
Majority.
Well, let me ask you a question, right, if if the vote gets turned down, you still want to have anybody appointed then?
If if the if the vote gets turned down, the supervisor has the option to appoint someone else.
Yeah.
Or or to bring back the appointment for consideration at another meeting.
Yep, lots of options.
Okay, so so in a way, you you don't have to decide today, if you turn the vote down tonight.
We don't, we don't have to.
Right, then we don't have to decide, Will can reconvene, you can
I could call, I could call special meeting before the twenty-second and I could, I could bring forward another um nomination, or I could bring back the same nomination for reconsideration by the board.
Okay, or we could nominate Judy tonight. If the first vote is turned down, I'm
You can't nominate anyone.
I didn't say, I didn't say, I said you could.
No, I said you could.
Actually, it sounded like, it sounded like, it sounded like we could. I listened, I, that's what I thought I heard you say.
I said you could nominate someone else tonight.
I I just have a question, so Mariah, if I were to make a motion to not confirm, what is the proper ver?
Oh, well, why wouldn't you just
Or take, is it to take no action?
Well, no, why wouldn't you just have a vote on the on the motion to appoint?
Oh.
And you would vote no.
Okay, that's fine.
Doesn't that make the most sense?
Yes. Yeah, I I don't want to make this motion, but if there's anyone
Wouldn't it make more sense to table it to a special meeting where we can think about this? And like, I don't have Monica Knowles's resume, I have her resume, she's a fantastic candidate.
Nobody asked me for Monica Knowles's resume.
I'm just saying
You know better.
I I'm just saying, this is
Know better.
You do, Will.
To provide information.
This afternoon.
We're beginning to sound like kids fighting in a sandbox, beginning
Be professional.
So I think if somebody wants, Will, did you want to make your motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to confirm the supervisor's appointment of Monica Knowles to the Compensation Commission for a five-year term commencing on December twelve, twenty twenty-three, is there support?
I'll support it, just to get it on the table.
All right, and I would like to make a comment in response to some of the things that have been said. Um, again, I looked at Judy Monk's qualifications, I've talked with Judy, I think Judy would be an asset um for the township, whether she's on the Compensation Commission or in some other capacity. And I'm, you know, as the person who is most often bringing forward nominations, I was really glad to see that she was interested in serving. I personally felt like, you know, I would like to know that and have that information because vacancies occur all the time, we had two vacancies occur before um now on the Compensation Commission that we had to fill. And I know from experience that one of the most difficult vacancies to fill is the Compensation Commission, because it is so difficult to find candidates to serve on the Compensation Commission who are qualified and willing to do so. So to know that there's somebody out there who's interested, who's qualified, who's not disqualified by some of the disqualifying qualifying criteria is, you know, to me, that's very, very valuable information. On the other hand, I saw that um Judy could serve in a variety of different capacities, and that's also valuable information to him. And I suggested, you know, the possibility of running. Because that is one option for someone with Judy's qualifications, I didn't right, so I I want to, I want to emphasize that I think Judy is a strong candidate to serve in some capacity for Sciop Township. Now, I do feel strongly that when someone has served and is willing to continue serving another term, that that is my preference, is to nominate that person. There is nothing against Monica's reappointment, she didn't, you know, miss meetings. She didn't, you know, perform in a in a way that was disrespectful or biased. I think that, you know, they, well, I know that's how you interpreted what you saw, but I don't treat that as bias, I treat that as looking at different factors and having a different opinion than other people. The Compensation Commission, to its credit, worked through some differences of opinion and made the deadline to deliver its determinations on salaries both times that Monica was the chair. I think that, to me, qualifies her for a reappointment. And I would, I, she is the person that I am putting forward at this time for for appointment. Now, the board can vote down, but that triggers, uh, you know, kind of an unnecessary delay.
Doesn't have to.
Well, it doesn't have to, it's it's true.
Just be point of order, it should just be comments on the motion on the table.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's my comment on the motion on the table.
Confirm the supervisor's appointment of Monica Knowles to the Compensation Commission for a five-year term commencing on December twelve, twenty-three. It was moved by Hathaway, support by Palmer.
I I I have comment on the motion. When, when does this body, when does the Compensation Commission next meet?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five. And we're getting our knickers in a twist now.
Because we have to
No, no, I I understand that, I understand that, and and I guess, Will, you have a statutory right to appoint. But you're not doing this poor Monica Knowles any favor by not giving us her resume. We've got, I I I know, but I, so I I I I'm going to vote it down, not because I'm not for Monica Knowles, I haven't met not Monica Knowles. I'm thankful for her service, I haven't seen her resume, and I just don't think this cake is ready to be baked tonight. That's my take on it, so that's why it's my intention to vote no, not against Monica, uh just, hey, that's, that's what, that's probably going to be my vote.
Well, that's more right there, that's more right there.
Most, most, call the question?
Yes.
Do we need a a vote to call the question?
I don't know, I mean, if we don't have the votes to uh confirm the appointment, we might as well just uh withdraw it.
Or do you want to call? I'd like to call the question, motion to call the question.
Don't have to call it, we don't
Motion to call the question.
Well, you can vote if you want, it doesn't have a different outcome.
A motion by Flintoft, support by Noel to call the question.
But can he withdraw it if the 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 movement, the the second or withdraws it?
You know what?
What's the parliamentary procedure?
Sure, sure, but what, I mean, what, what's, let's, I mean, I think it's, I mean, for the
Well, if it's not, if there's not going to be confirmation
He's not going to know unless we vote.
Then I will withdraw.
Let's vote.
I will withdraw it.
I think, I think you know it's going to be a five-two vote if we go to a vote.
I don't think anybody knows that until we vote.
Well, I know it's not going to
And and I don't, I don't think it's going to be recorded as such, unless there's a vote, and so I've called the question Noel has supported.
What is the question?
The question is, the calling the question means that we would vote
We have discussion.
Go to a vote to end debate now, we would vote, we'd first vote to end debate, basically, and then we would vote on the motion itself.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, I'm willing to withdraw the motion if people aren't ready to confirm it tonight.
No, I I'd like to vote on it.
Well, I'm sure you would. But I'm saying I would like to withdraw the motion and just move on on the agenda.
I guess what I want to say, Will, is what my concern is, for this process, for this board, my experience over the last three years is if that we don't vote tonight, the process will get prolonged.
The process is going to be prolonged.
Prolonged more than if we vote.
I think we should vote.
By not voting, it gives people the chance to withdraw their applications and save the indication of a down vote.
John, I under, I understand that.
Someone loses.
I I understand that, I'm just telling you from my, from my experience on this board.
Yes, I agree, I agree with Jessica.
That would be ideal, just not.
All right, well, let's call it over, let's get it over with.
Flintoft, no, for Zo?
Got to say no on this one, Will.
Carrie?
No.
Noel?
No.
Riser?
No.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Well, I supported the motion, so I'm going to have to vote yes.
Okay, motion fails, uh, two to five.
Okay, let's move on with the agenda.
So let, let me ask a question. We have the option at any time during the meeting to amend our agenda. And we have, Will, you have the option, putting forth another nominee.
You don't even have to amend the agenda, it's just a new motion.
Okay. This could solve our problems, I know it's confusing.
No, it's not confusing, it's very clear. I it just sounds like you're trying to make a motion to make I I just sounds like you're trying to make a motion to make not make a nomination.
You would have to do that.
Right.
Which is what I said before, and I recognize that. But I'm pointing out to you that that would solve some of the problems we've had here tonight, and that would solve us necessitating a special meeting potentially to take care of this.
I get it. I mean, you're 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 explaining stuff that we all know.
He he doesn't want to make the motion.
I'm not gonna make another motion.
So.
So.
I would suggest I would suggest you move forward.
Yeah, and and all due respect, we'll give him some time to digest everything and let him think about what he wants to do. This is his, this is his call.
Yep.
Right, so let him.
Yeah.
So move, so moving on to item J five.
Two-minute break or?
Sure, why don't we take a five-minute break? Can we all promise to just be five minutes this time? Come back without him doing the chase.
Yep.
Okay, John Thursday.
Okay, Joyce, behaviors.
Okay, she will come back at ten o'clock and just pick it up.
Well, Joyce is actually not part of the forum, so it's nice.
Yeah.
She could leave.
Yeah, that's right. Don't give her any ideas.
It wasn't the inspiration.
But it but.
People know what that is. Those people are. Oh, we're having all, everybody's going.
What are your Christmas plans?
Um. We are going, uh, we, well, we always have the kids open for us. Three, one of each.
Three, one of each.
I have a son, twenty-five, he's coming in. I got a daughter, thirty-one, and a daughter, thirty-three. But the one with the granddaughter, the grandson's not coming. On you, what are you doing?
I'm sure what I scheduled is.
You gonna be the up north thing?
Uh, no.
No?
No, we play around here because we usually have Christmas morning breakfast with our daughter that lives a million miles.
Oh, okay.
That's become a tradition.
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
I I don't know what they have to, well. At this point, we just want to get through this. I got a project at home that's half done. I want to get it done. And this whole tax thing was just a real try.
I bet it was exhausting, right?
It was. I mean, I had. Uh, Andrea did the majority of the work, getting everything, getting the list, proper list. I had lots of help. Andrea, the assessor, my deputy, and it still was, I can't feel this. Okay, but they're out. Everyone's pretty, including me.
It's never.
Yeah, I know, but at the same time, I don't.
I mean, I could have got, uh, but I was just getting too.
I'm surprised that, you know, I I.
So far, it's it's, you know, the honeymoon with the steroids, with the steroids, it's the honeymoon, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we'll see what happens. I I will be when I went out. I'll stay, I just want to chow down again.
Mariah, Mariah says, can you get a mark out of the kitchen, please?
Did she really?
Well, she has to get.
I was, I was in the kitchen, dude. I was sure I got busted. I'm taking some of those things, things off, man. Okay, things are good.
I I can, I have the recipe. I'm sharing it. I've had it since nineteen ninety-two.
I like it once a bell's cooked.
Oh, no, no. I I like, yeah, I make a great big batch and make it in little loaf pans and give them away for.
I bet they're healthy. Well, they're healthy at all.
Well, it's, you know, I mean, all the dry fruit.
Hey, you lied to me.
Oh, yes, so. Actually, there's really not a lot of flour for the big batch. It's mostly the fruit. And when you're making it, you put it together, and you're like, oh, I don't have enough.
And but if you make sure they're.
Okay, just.
I think a large child dinner.
Oh, yeah, we have some things.
Yeah, wa- yeah, washed off by your.
Joe's tears.
It's the non-technical term.
Tears, yeah, I gotta head over both.
I didn't go in the farm, but we have.
Yeah, thank you.
She was out.
They're gonna be my partner next year, show.
Actually, well, she's not a dairy farm, but she actually showed me. And the first year she showed, you know, she. But anyway, she showed the same, and the next year she.
Yeah, she got bread, she got Nesta, bakers, I mean, everything in uh baby's years.
Yeah, so she is she a business owner?
The economics.
Yeah, especially this time of year because it's dark, like during the summer.
I will, um.
Houses, there's condos and houses.
I was at four H.
Probably. You know, I try to set a lot.
Unless a map, maybe.
I just need to watch now.
So I just do do the.
My granddaughter showed.
Whatever.
And she handed that to the mom. I swear.
So can we get Judy to do something else in the meantime? So Judy, you know, there's only, the meetings are only once every two years.
Yeah, that's why it's so interesting that.
I don't want to hear you say something more than that.
Get a lot of time to research the salary information. That's the basic.
That is true, that is true. We'd like to get you for something else. We gave you a little more of your time. How you how you feel about that? Maybe?
Well, maybe, yeah.
We have a chat.
Now, don't fabricate.
All right, let's see how big the job was.
Yeah, let's 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 come back. Let's let's come back from our recess.
Uh, so returning at ten oh two.
All right, um, right, item J five, the Roads Advisory Committee appointment. Um, this is also being brought back. Uh, before it included, the appointments included another uh person who we we learned at our last meeting is um no longer interested in serving on the Roads Advisory Committee. Um, so this is now just one appointment. The motion is to approve appointment of Roy Townsend to the Roads Advisory Committee for a term commencing on December eighth, twenty twenty-three, and running through September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. With a second.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Hathaway, support by Carrie. I I I do have some discussion on this. Uh, I was talking to Bob Hyde yesterday, and 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 he said that, like, how many openings are there?
So one, and we, well, actually, there's three, but we.
You can look at your chart.
Sorry, go on, Jen.
No, no, I appreciate it.
So the Road Advisory Committee has asked that the board reviews from nine to seven. We haven't brought that up yet because I haven't presented that yet, even though we agreed, um, because then the whole thing about liaisons came up. There was term, um, staggered terms, which we did not have in our um charge. We also do not have liaisons in our charge. So right now, most of our members are liaisons, and we only have two that are regular residents. I'd like to see. Openings filled by residents that are are interested instead of having every committee have a member on another committee and then another committee because that blocks off openings to residents.
Right, I'm not pushing back against that. I'm just saying, a- at the, uh.
And when I spoke with Bob Hyde, he thought he, after Jeff Human left, Jeff was the liaison from the Planning Commission, and then Bob was going to step in. But when I talked with him, he goes, I really, you know, I wouldn't, don't really want to do it unless it is a liaison thing. So it wasn't like, oh, yeah, I want to be on the Road Advisory Committee. He was only doing it to be the liaison. And I said, we don't have liaisons. There's nothing in a policy.
So I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Well, this is for you, yeah.
But 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 um but I will say a- on a broader basis, I I Bob Hyde did express an interest in being part of the Road Advisory uh Committee.
Yeah, after you and Bob Walsh were talking with him, I know that. But anyways, the thing is, I want an opening from a resident instead of another liaison.
Julian, Bob Hyde, Bob Hyde mentioned it to me. I, it's not like we're trying to foment, hey, Bob.
Hey, how about if Jillian or John or whomever bring to a future meeting?
I agree.
Additional appointments. Anybody can make the appoint, anybody on the board can make the appointments to the Road. Nominate, yes. Well, and the other thing is, I think we need to get clear on the rules, the policies for these committees. PPP has liaisons to RAC and some, but that's the only committee that actually has liaison other than board. And Jillian, I did try in the chart um to note what was required. Um, so for Roads, members shall be appointed by majority vote of the board. Terms shall be for four years, except in cases when the board may set shorter terms for purposes of staggering. They're just residents. Have that, this is something that's not in our charge. Okay, well, that's fine. I think there's an interest, a public policy. I'll correct that, Jillian. I I thought I pulled that from the charge, but I'll I'll double check that. I do think there's an, in if, I guess what I'm curious about is Roy Townsend, why is the um model motion for such an odd length of time? Because he began the same time, the same day that the rest of us did, except for the Bobs that started a month later. So this is really to fill the remainder of this term? Yes. Okay, could I suggest a friendly amendment to the model motion for the remainder of term?
I I don't know what that means in this context. He he was appointed to a term that that ended on December eighth. We can't, we can't go back in the time machine and sort of change the nature of his a- appointment.
Oh, so I see. So it's not a remainder of the term?
Well, the the.
It would match the.
Basically, the compromise that we reached in.
We.
Me and the Chair of the Roads Advisory Committee was to make the appointment, the reappointment, align with the other appointments that were made at the same time that he started. So it has the effect, it has the effect of that.
I see.
But that's not really what it's doing.
I see. Okay, so then we'll have, um, okay, that's fine. I support that.
Okay, so can we call the rolls?
Yeah. No, it's it's, but but there's not a, but there's not a, there there's still a public policy interest in staggering. There's a, yeah, public policy interest in staggering the terms.
Where is it?
I'm saying there's an interest. I'm not saying it's written down. I'm saying in any committee where you want to have good balance, there's an interest in staggering and bringing a good balance of folks.
Well, it says in your in your term of office.
That's what I thought. That's why I had it in my chart.
May elect a shorter term for purposes of staggering. It's in RAC?
Yeah.
Isn't this a resolution?
And if we, actually, if we appointed him to a full term, a four-year term, that would introduce staggering while into the term.
Yeah, so what? Yes. Okay, I apologize here.
So can we do it for a full term as as per the instructions? That would introduce some staggering.
Terms shall be for four years, except in cases when the board may set shorter terms for purposes of staggering terms.
Right, so this would be the opposite of that. It would, it would sort of align terms rather than staggering them.
Exactly, that's why I raised it. So I'm happy.
So just what are you, what are you proposing to do this?
No, I I'm I I'm not gonna interrupt this. If 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 Will and Jillian are fine with this, I'm fine to proceed. I'm just saying, it's just repeating the chronic.
Well, if Jillian, if you're comfortable following the the charge.
So we're gonna give him four years.
Pointing to a full four-year term, then that would intro, that would help to start introducing more staggering into the Church.
Right. Because the charge says four years, correct?
Four years.
Remember that in the original. Yeah.
I mean, i- i- if we were pointing him to a a term at this point with an expired term, reappointing him, it would be to a full four-year term.
Right.
That would be the typical, that would be following the chart.
Yeah.
It's too gritty about that one. So then the rest of us are going to expire, except for me. Expire.
Well, unless unless the board acts in a in a separate situation or separate action to reintroduce more staggering. I mean, you could have vacancies and you could have staggering introduced that way, too. There's there's ways to do it without sort of imposing it on people in the midterm.
And and wait a minute. Okay, so we're, so the term of, uh, uh.
Yeah.
Members shall be four years.
Right.
Except in instances where the Board of Trustees may elect to set a shorter term for purposes of staggering.
Which we didn't do back in September twenty twenty-one, so everyone started off with four-year terms.
Right. I mean, so you've got the other people expiring in September of twenty-five, October of twenty-five, all these random dates, but twenty-five. So you could stagger by, you know, doing a one-year term or doing a or a four-year term. I mean, a four-year term honors both, the four-year term and the and achieves the staggering. So I would, I think the four-year term would be the most appropriate for this vacancy.
I would support that.
Is Roy good with that?
Yeah. It'll have to be.
We're appointing him.
Or we'll have a vacancy and then we can.
Well, yeah, one way or another.
Okay.
So um with with the approval of the second or of the motion, we would just change it to a four-year term and not put a time and date in the motion.
Eight.
How do we get off on?
For a four-year term commencing on December eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So friendly amendment would be to the four-year term commencing on December eighth? That's, again, okay, fine.
Well, we can have it commenced today if you want.
That's fine.
Okay, commencing on December twelfth.
Period.
Twenty twenty-three period?
Yep. It needs to be changed.
Okay, so the amended motion is to approve appointment of Roy Townsend to the Roads Advisory Committee for a four-year term commencing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Doesn't have to be.
Period, period. Well, if Jillian wants to still be the second.
Let's have one conversation at a time.
I'm I'm sorry, we're just, I'm just answering a question about staggering.
Yeah, take your time.
Do you still want to second the motion, amended motion?
Sure.
Okay, so moved by Hathaway, support by Carrie, to approve appointment of Roy Townsend to the Roads Advisory Committee for a four-year term commencing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, period. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion is approved. And then there's a question about whether we could move up an item for which someone is waiting here, and that is, um, the uh, Washna Area Mutual Aid Council Agreement. Is that, is that acceptable to the board?
The board, the board?
Let's hear J seven.
Okay, so we're moving a J seven up. Chief, please come forward.
Thank you, board. I hope not to take too much of your time tonight. Uh, you have a resolution in front of you to form an interlocal agreement called the Washtenaw Area Mutual Aid Compact. To explain why it's needed, I'm gonna tell you what exists and its deficiencies. And how we got to this point. Um. Some time ago, uh, fire departments decided that they needed to call on each other for help. In order to do that, you have to have a mutual aid agreement. Uh, way back when, I can't tell you when, Washtenaw County decided they were gonna form a five oh one C three called the Washtenaw Area Mutual Aid Association. This predates Syle Township's fire department's existence. And when Syle Township created their fire department, they became a signatory to the WAMA organization, the five oh one C three. Additionally, WAMA uh, WAMA has organized and operates a couple specialty teams. We have a technical rescue team. Uh, that team's used for trench rescue, uh, confined space rescue. We have extrication capabilities that exceed local uh, units' capabilities as well as swift water team. All of those things, uh, have vehicles, uh, spaced throughout the county. We have equipment we own as the WAMA group. Uh, and this is all under the umbrella of a five oh one C three organization. Issue we had, uh, which was brought to attention prior to my, uh, being involved in Syle Township, and it's finally come to a resolution, is that, that format or that, how that's formed offers no governmental immunity when these teams act. So, uh, significant issue there. We have county resources that are, all different departments come in. We, we, we lose some of our governmental immunity and protections when we're operating, say for the example, uh, in Syle Township on our behalf. Uh, the conclusion, uh, we've reached through the Fire Chiefs, uh, meeting is that this needs to become a governmental organization, which is the Washtenaw Area Mutual Aid Compact you have in front of you. This would be created, uh, under the Urban Cooperation Act, among other other acts, uh, which would allow us to have our mutual aid agreement where we can call on our neighbors for help, the same as we do today, as well as the two specialty teams, the tech team and the, uh, water rescue team that we found today as well. Uh, this does place a slight more burden on Syle Township, uh, as it would be an intergovernmental agreement. The budget for the organization would have to be adopted by all the signatories. Uh, so you would see me before every year with a budget. Uh, we're not proposing changing any budget whatsoever. Our dues would remain the same. And, uh, our functioning would remain the same in, in all aspects, with the exception of these teams would now have governmental immunity when they operate on behalf of the department that's a, a signatory to it. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
Uh, Chief, thanks for your work on this. Thanks to Township Attorney Jim Farah, I think, for your work on this. I know it's been a couple of years. Just wanna know, it looks like the budget approval be kind of similar to what we do for warm-up. Um, and we would have to do this by not later than December fifteenth of each year. Um, so we're just, um, ask that the chief and manager and I all kind of put that on our calendars. Um, cause it says failure to timely approve the budget will be considered notice of termination.
Yeah, that puts some, uh, puts some teeth, uh, to what the organization has, has to do as well. Uh, and, and you're absolutely correct. Uh, Mr. Fink was involved extensively with this. He serves as counsel, uh, to several departments or several communities within the, the county. So I worked with two other fire chiefs, uh, and him on this on our behalf. And he has signed off on this, uh, form and function, so.
Um, what is your revenue source? You have a budget, so is it, does, does the dues from each, there's no other?
Nope. Uh, we, we would have the potential to apply for grants being a governmental entity. So, so there is some. Correct, there is some increased, uh, grant funding available, uh, that I assume these teams would, uh, look for.
These are all Washtenaw County.
Washtenaw area. Uh, there are several that are outside of the county. Uh, they, they.
I was just trying to.
Yep.
Figure out if I missed something over the years. Okay.
No, uh, many of them border Washtenaw County and, uh, that's the reason for their inclusion.
Makes sense.
Further questions for the chief?
Uh, process-wise, uh, after, uh, this board hopefully adopts it, we signed six, six copies. Uh, once these are all collected amongst all the twenty-some-odd, uh, signatories, uh, the agreement then goes up to the state of Michigan, uh, where they work their magic and, uh, formally adopt it. Once that happens, it's, uh, sent to the the county clerk of each county affected, uh, which makes it an actual organization at that point.
I prepare to move a model resolution.
Please, board.
Okay, so to adopt the attached Washtenaw Area Mutual Aid Council Interlocal Resolution. Moved by Ryzer, support by Palmer. Let's do a roll call vote.
Flintoff, yes. Brzeo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ryzer?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted as presented.
Not sure, I feel, not sure I feel about your reference to twenty, uh, signatories. Happy to sign.
You're the odd one. I know. I don't, I don't wanna be the, the thing of the punch bowl. Everybody asks a question, you know, we've got any commitment to Andy, but he's here, we're gonna prioritize him on the agenda. Remember what you said, we try to, as we're going behind, try to get this guy to the very front of the agenda. Is there, are reasons why we didn't do that? I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I, I guess we could take time to discuss that now, but it seems to me that we're better off moving on with the agenda and having that discussion perhaps, um, with someone else.
Yeah, I think we should all, maybe we could all be more mindful at the top of the adoption of agenda and just clarify if there's people present.
Yeah, cause I wonder why I'm putting it here. I'm like, I didn't know you were on the agenda. I would've said something. I didn't, I didn't know there was a line I had for you. I thought you were just here to hang out or something. I was, wow, he really likes us.
Have a good night.
All right, let's go.
J six?
Oh, well, yeah, okay, fine. Let's deal with.
J six.
Well, he just left, right? So, yeah. Yeah, because I don't think he was expecting you to deal with G six, cause it's not his agenda item. It's Chris Bailey's agenda.
Oh, agree. Agree. Yeah.
Yeah, that's very great. Is that what you were speaking?
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Oh, 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 and I, I didn't understand that's what you were referring to. I thought you were referring to the thing that we just dealt with.
Oh, oh, G, G six. I, I don't know why it was pulled from, I mean, that is Chris's item.
Yeah, it's Chris's item. It's not Andy's item.
Here, so that's why it's, it's in the chief's area, but I don't know why it was pulled either.
Oh, I pulled it. Did, did anybody have a question for the chief on that, Jillian?
No.
Okay.
Actually, I talked to the chief about it, but I wanted, are we at, and then?
No, we're not at that.
Oh, okay, well then.
I don't want it to leave.
Oh, no, no, no.
My question, I want to grab it.
You agree.
So let's move on to item J six.
All right.
So this is the, uh, uh, this is an item from Township Manager Carter, so Township Manager Parker, you please introduce this agenda.
Well, um, basically, the, um, board had discussed earlier in reference to ARPA funding, they tried to have those dollars expended, um, by year. And I, if you recall, it was maybe about five to six months ago, there was a concern, uh, to our, uh, Dingles office that we should try to spend the money, concerned about the clawback. And then in addition to that, um, there's some provisions with, um, state shared revenue where the township would receive, um, some additional funding, uh, in the event that, um, the ARPA funding is expended by year, and it's not a substantial amount, but money's money, you know? So I just thought I should get that as well. And so what we're suggesting here is that, um, remaining anticipated funding be, um, appropriated to the, um, Road Commission in order to, uh, actually consider certain, uh, roads for the upcoming year.
Appropriation and authorization of remaining ARPA funds is the title.
Yeah, J six.
Oh.
So, um, trustee Carrie, myself, and, uh, supervisor Hathaway had a meeting with the Road Commission. And based on, um, certain areas that are included in the, uh, Road Committee plan, uh, is recommending that we consider these areas because I believe they're considered connector roads to the primary roads.
And most in need, sort of, spin most in need, yeah.
Oh.
I would move, motion, sorry, country.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I spoiled your report earlier.
Oh, no.
Um, yes, and this, this can be changed and that's.
Right, yeah. Um, yeah, actually, the, the Road Commission had indicated that if we need to amend it, we can do that moving forward next year. And then it also, uh, places the township in a position of receiving, uh, matching funds through the Road Commission, so we can actually look at leveraging other dollars that can be used for other streets.
So it's moved by Ryzer. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Carrie. Is there further discussion?
Yes. Um, so first, I, I wanna thank, um, everybody for working on this. And Joyce, thanks for getting this done by December thirty-first. Um, really appreciate it, um, because it does allow us, by Joyce bringing this to us tonight, it does allow us to be eligible for some additional bonuses, uh, with the state. So, um, thank you, Joyce. Um, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the model motion, um, because I've met the Road Commission and also, um, just to ensure we have enough money here, um, they always provide the estimate of five hundred and fifty-three thousand. It's almost always more than their estimate, and so I thought it would be good to include a not to exceed. So I would suggest the following. Addition to the end of the model motion and authorize a not to exceed amount of five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars from first ARPA funding and then general fund. And so if that five fifty-three isn't the right amount, I'm, I'm open to that. I thought we could start with the estimated amount and agreement.
Yeah, that's gonna work.
Okay. And then to say it would first come from, from ARPA and anything rest, remaining from the general.
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the secondor?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Flintoff, yes. Brzeo? Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ryzer?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, done real.
Okay, that brings us to J eight. This is the Washtenaw County Water Resources Grant Application, and, um, this sort of popped up late, um, but it is, it has some urgency to it because there's deadlines involved. You know, deadlines not only for applying for the, the, uh, grant fund, but also for working with the Road Commission as a partner in, but actually, this is your agenda. I am trying to, Township Manager Parker, so I should let you take the lead.
Well, when we, uh, had our meeting with, um, the Road Commission, they indicated that there's, um, a deadline coming up for, uh, culvert repairs that are offering, but I believe that the deadline is before our next meeting. And so it was suggested that we place the item on the agenda, which would allow us to apply for the grant funding.
And this is the second round of grant funding. We missed the first round because we didn't have Joyce here to fill out the application.
And I, thank you for everybody's work on this. A question, um, if, so if we apply, maybe we get it. Um, that twenty-five percent that would come from the township, what is the fund that will be proposed for that? Is that general fund, Joyce, or?
That's what we.
Or TDD?
I, I would think it would come out of the general fund.
Okay.
And there, and I, I think they clarified too at the meeting, if I remember correctly, that, um, uh, this is an approval to apply for the command. The board will have an opportunity to vote again on whether to accept the grant, should we receive a grant.
Okay, so then we'll commit those.
So then at that time, we could either turn it down if, for whatever reason we wanted to, or, or we could, we could figure out some other source for the funds.
Well, it sounds good. You have to say that, um, the Road Advisory Committee, we did check out these culverts, and I crawled down into the park road culvert, and it's really bad. I took pictures. People were stopping to see if I needed help.
But yes, Jillian, I don't know. We're, we're just glad you made it out.
Well, you know, they're not gonna tell us, you know, we have bad culverts. I'm gonna check it out.
Did you?
Right.
You never saw the movie Hit, did you?
The what?
The movie Hit.
There's, there's a movie about a feature that comes.
No, I don't do Stephen King anymore.
I'd like to move the model motion.
Support by Ryzer. All right, so moved by Flintoff, support by Ryzer. Um, please call the roll.
Flintoff, yes. Brzeo? Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Ryzer?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
All right, that brings us to another item. This is J nine. This is, uh, also the Township Manager's item, so I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So, um, several months ago, the, uh, board had asked me to take a look at, um, a proposal as far as an advisory committee to look at the, um, bus millage for next year, given that it will expire. And, uh, as part of that process, um, making recommendations on who might be able to serve on and at hot committee for about three months, three to four months, in order to, um, kind of evaluate, um, the status of, um, the service delivery, um, whether there are other areas that should be considered related to services uh, coming up into the, uh, upcoming year, and whether there's a need to consider even looking at, uh, a renewal of the, the millage, and if so, at the existing rate or a different rate. And so what is, um, recommended here is to, uh, consider a transit bus advisory committee, uh, that will commence mid-December and expire, uh, March thirty-first. And, uh, I'm recommending that we consider the Chair of the Planning Commission, uh, Township Supervisor, uh, Siles Wade Board Representative, uh, myself, and if the board chooses, an additional member of the, uh, Board of Trustees to serve on this committee.
Joyce, thank you so much for your work on this. Um, this is, I'm really glad we're moving forward with this. Um, I just wanna know a couple things. Um, if the committee's work is done by March thirty-first with recommendations, that would give us about two meetings, two or three meetings at the board.
Yeah, I kind of, you mean as far as the committee work?
Subsequent to the committee work. I'm just thinking, if, if we have the, the committee's recommendations to the board by March thirty-first.
Okay.
Then it's by May fourteenth that this board would have to adopt any ballot language for an August election. So what I'm saying is between March thirty-first and May fourteenth, we'd have about two board meetings where we could hash that out. Um, so it would be May fourteenth is the absolute deadline to appear on August. Um, certainly, we could also, um, put it, if we so choose to put anything on the ballot, we could put it on the, um, November ballot as well. Um, but I personally would like to, um, as much as possible, Joyce, have that committee work really be done and pretty fully baked by March thirty-first, so that we could potentially spend those next couple of meetings hammering out some good language.
Time to really deliberate and make a decision.
Yeah, cause I, I know that we had, like, very intensive fire services guidance committee meetings for three months. Really good, really tight operation. And then it still took the board two whole months to come up with that, um, ballot language. Um, so I, I think it's possible. I just want us to be mindful that that March thirty-first has gotta be a firm deadline. Um, so I, I think it's possible, I just want us to be mindful that that March thirty first has got to be a firm deadline. We want to have hope for getting something well vetted on the August ballot.
In August, uh, W C R C will have their renewal road, road, uh, but isn't that what they said?
Yeah, the county, the county road, county road millage is coming up for renewal.
Yeah.
In August?
I believe that's what they said.
Okay, and we also know the county's, you know, public safety, mental health, millage will be coming up. So in any case, there'll be multiple asks on probably both ballots, I would guess.
But if we want to have the option of putting it on the August ballot, we have to be mindful of the May fourteenth deadline.
Correct, yeah.
And then the only other comment, um, the, um, Ann Arbor Area Transit Authority, as well as SEMCO, both have agreed to provide technical assistance for the group.
That's great committee.
Further questions, discussion? Is someone prepared to make the model motion?
Yeah, your only question was wave ref, is that, uh, Kim Moore?
Kim Moore.
Yes, it's spelled out in the motion.
Yeah. And, and I would just know, in the future, I would love to get to a point where Sylott Township has a rep for AAA T A. For a future meeting, so we should be more involved regularly.
I do like meetings. Uh, all a question if it hasn't been?
Well, you have to make the motion.
I've moved the model motion.
Okay, Riser moves the model motion.
Well, I would first fix the motion.
Okay.
Um, to, if we are not, first I want to confirm, our manager suggested, do we want an additional Board member? And if we don't, we should just strike that last portion of the motion. I don't want to have an ambiguous motion.
Well, we could add one later, I suppose, if someone wanted to serve, they're not ready to raise their hand tonight.
You guys are looking at me? No, I, I, I'm not going to serve. Joyce and I already had this discussion.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I guess we can keep it in there for future, I just know that Joyce needs a team that she can kind of just jump in and get going with, so. I, I think it's fine to not have an additional member. I, I appreciate others are, are stepping forward on this.
I think we meet in once a week, about three months.
I'm, I'm not sure, I think once we convene members meeting, we can kind of top out a schedule. But at the stance right now, I can't.
We just put a, um, hold on the trustee position?
We can leave it the way that it is, and that leaves us the option to.
Okay.
So move by Riser, support by?
Support.
By Carrie.
Or Mark.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that one from Carrie's. Um, it was Riser and Carrie.
Okay.
That's who I saw first.
Okay, G three?
G three, um, in this, a vote from the consent agenda by request of Trustee Carrie, Carrie, uh, Trustee Carrie, what, what questions you have?
Um, I think it's, okay, um. We did, yeah, so, wait a minute, um. Okay, well, first of all, thank you for putting this together, Mary.
Mary Gillis.
Mary Gillis, yeah, um, so the supervisor's, um, article, there's two things. So it's, you're listing the stat, statutory duties, but the Board of Review Secretary is a statutory duty. So this is a request to the public to apply for these positions. So, Board of Review is pretty important, and the next supervisor needs to fulfill that duty because it is statutory. So I, I would hate for somebody to run for office for supervisor and then find out that they have to be the secretary. That was one thing. So there's.
There's a clerical, clerical error, that we were saying that needs to be.
Well.
This is the, why don't we let, uh, Trustee Carrie explain all of her concerns and then we can discuss.
Fine, oh, and the D D A, isn't that a statutory duty as well?
It's under our.
Or is it an ordinance?
It's under our ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So it's not technically, I think, a statutory duty under Michigan law.
Okay, um. The, it says the November election, this is just a probably clarification.
Sure.
The November election is the final vote when qualified non-affiliated candidates compete against the winners in the August primary.
That's basically correct. I mean, I, yeah, it, so, so, and I explained this in my prior article in the newsletter, is that the August primaries for people who are running as Democrats or Republicans. Additionally, um, non-affiliated candidates may run for office. They obviously wouldn't be part of the primary, they would just run in the general. So I think that's basically accurate.
Well, thank you for that clarification, because I was, generally, townships have one party that wins, and then, you know, in the August, and then they go up against the other party in November, but that's where I was like, they're not, not affiliated.
Both the result of, of the primary in August, so the Republican primary, the Democratic primary yields a candidate, and then the non-affiliated candidate runs as well.
Right, right, usually, yeah.
You don't have to be affiliated with a party to run for the partisan office of Township Office.
Right, okay, um, and then under, uh, this is page four, the D D A, so, um, thank you Sandy Lussard for writing the article, but we had the D D A discussion earlier, um, different things. And her very last sentence says, the D D A, um, I'm sorry, the additional tax revenue created from the increased property value is then used by the D D A to finance projects such as landscaping. But then they came to us asking for money. So I, this where, and I, I did ask Mariah if she could do a presentation for just, and you have background with D D A, so that we're on the same page, that we have the education. Um, this is what the D D A does, what, and what they, they do and they don't, they can't do. This is how, um, the Township Board, what their, um, connection with the D D A, because I know they have to ask, you know, their budget and whatnot, but also there's the Planning Commission and how they interact with the D D A. And just to kind of, for all of us to be on the same page, because I hear different things, like the D D A can't do maintenance. Okay, can they or can't they? I don't know. So there's just a lot of rumors, and if we had, um, either, well, both Joyce and Mariah, maybe you could come with a presentation for all of us. Anyway, so when I read this, I thought, well, wait a minute, they're asking us for money, but then they're saying they finance projects, so.
Good point.
Yeah, but both can be true.
Yeah, and I, I, if I can add.
Okay, yeah, I just.
So Sandy, Sandy is a new person, like, uh, even newer than Jennifer on the D D A Board. One of the projects that she worked on is she served on a subcommittee that, um, came up with a plan for landscaping. I think that's why she put that in, is because it's the thing that she was most familiar with, so she used that as an example.
Sure, but it's.
Finance projects such as landscaping.
Right, the, the, and the D D, the D D, just to clarify, the D D A's request for reimbursement of the tree planting is only a small portion of the larger landscaping project. So it's not, it's, as John said, it's, both things can be true.
Okay.
It's a saying, you should plant the boulevard to ground covers.
I'm sorry, so.
Let's put rock out there.
So Trustee Carrie, is that?
That's it.
So, um, I, I, I've responded to the question about the D D A article, um, and I can respond to the question about adding statutory duties, more of them, to the other article. Um, I, originally, I had a much longer draft that went into much more detail about statutory duties and responsibilities, and, um, the editor, Mary Gillis, trimmed that back significantly. So it's, uh, this article, the final version, is about a third shorter. But if we wanted to add back all of the statutory duties, um, you know, it would require of expanding the article significantly.
Well, I had an idea, because first of all, I appreciate, it's always difficult to summarize something as complex as statutory duties into a couple of paragraphs. Um, I, I do think, you know, given that, you know, we're just talking about the office, we're not talking about the particular office holder, you know, some supervisors are certified assessors. Whether supervisors are certified assessors or not, all supervisors are, uh, the chief assessing officer. And so I do think, just saying, you know, supervisor's duty is to be the chief assessing officer, something about assessing, um, would cover it. I know later you have the preparing special assessments roles, but I think you can state, serves as the chief assessing officer, even if that's in quotes or something, um, to just share that, I think, I mean, assessing is the major role of the supervisor.
Yeah.
How it's carried out is different, many boards like ours hire certified assessors when the office holder isn't certified.
That's already in the article, I don't understand what the problem, it says, serving as chief assessor. Parentheses, unless the supervisor is not a certified assessor.
It's actually, all supervisors serve as the chief assessing officer, so you supervise the assessing department? Um, I mean, oversee the function?
I think you're splitting hairs, and, and I, if we're going to represent the office as it exists and as it is performed inside of township, this is a much more accurate description than leaving some question in people's minds about what's the.
I think, I think we're just, all I'm saying is, and, and I don't think we need to fully wordsmith this, I just think that the statutory duties, if, because we're talking about the office, we don't know who might, you know, run for office, just, just to describe it as it is in the statute. Um, you know, certainly, like, the treasurers, the clerks, it's, you know, it, it describes, you know, kind of receiving, taking charge of money for treasure, collecting property taxes, managing investments, just kind of the big boom, boom, boom areas, and, and assessing is the primary one for supervising.
It is in there, so. It's covered. I, you know, the, the problem with rewriting this is it delays the newsletter.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to our editors. Um, you know, kind of take this.
This is the version that we've worked out, Mary and I, Mary said to me, so this is the final, I'm treating this as the final. And so if we want to make changes, if we want to sort of, you know, tinker with the language, what we're talking about is delaying the publication of the newsletter.
Well, then we can finalize it tonight.
No, you can, you can, you can either go with my article the way that I wrote it and that I agreed upon with Mary Gillis, or you can delay the, the publication.
Well, I'll say we all defer to our editor. I give my articles to Mary, she tears it up, she does a great job. I, I might say, like, oh, this thing's important or not important, but I defer to her, because she's a great editor. She improves all of our, um, articles, um, it is a publication of the Board, so, I mean.
It's my article, you cannot change it without my permission. The way that we did this before, when you guys wanted to change it, is we delayed the publication, and I went back and rewrote. That is what we do, so you cannot rewrite my article unless you want to invite me to rewrite your article.
You've already tried that. I, I don't want to get into that, Will, I'm just saying, look, there's, it's, we're talking about one sentence, I think we can.
Where, where's the sentence, the problematic sentence?
Okay, it's, she doesn't, he, he doesn't have secretary to Board of Review here.
Which is not something that I do.
Yeah, it's not about what you do, it's about what the office is.
I want to point out in the statute, it states that the supervisor shall be secretary of the Board of Review. This is M C L forty-one point sixty-one.
Well, it's.
I mean, it shall be.
Here's your choice, here's your choice. You can, you can, you can insist that I rewrite it.
Just modify a few words.
No, no, it's the Board's publication, we can rewrite it here, or we can direct our.
Oh, no.
Or we can direct our.
Rewrite my article under my name.
We can, we, we can just ask our editor to just take the Board's feedback and finalize it.
So, 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 yeah, you guys, I think, I think we are, I, people, it, it's, it's not like somebody's going to make this decision solely on that article. They're going to read that and go, huh, that sounds interesting, let me go find out more information about the supervisor. And that's where they'll get all the detail, and, you know, for more information, go to Sylott Township dot org, backslash supervisor role.
Right.
I would get hung up on, on, on wordsmithing too much, I just, I don't think anybody other than us are going to know that, that level of detail. I, I think it's probably in Will's defense, on this one, I think is easy, okay, it's, it's, I think it's fine, I, I don't think it's a.
Okay, there's one, there's one more thing in the newsletter. Um, under, on the page five, six, six, um, it says, there's a little box at the bottom, recycle.
Yeah.
And it says that can that contains Michigan-made cider could have come out of your neighbor's recycling bin and got processed with a new can, or it could have come from the ground in a.
Bauxite.
Bike, bauxite mine in Australia, got shipped to Asia for processing, and then got put on a boat and moved here. Four times the amount of greenhouse gas is saved by taking that already mined aluminum and turning it into a new can. Okay, so I, when I read that, I was like, well, maybe we shouldn't be drinking out of cans? You know, because one way or another, we're using resources, but it just, it, it just struck me funny that, um, picture, and how do, how are we going to know that that can is?
So should we make a note to the editor that that blurb is not effective?
Yeah.
Say, it's confusing, I'm just kidding, can you shore it up or say a little more succinct?
What are they wanting us to do?
Yeah.
Um, and does it, and a can, does it tell us that it's recycled?
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes it does, but not.
It's a quote from another public.
Right, but, yeah, no, it's just, but. It's not effective.
Well, is it a change that we want to make to the newsletter at this point, or do we want?
Yeah.
Oh, well, okay, fine.
I don't think it would be that hard.
We're going to take this speed, let Mary, if Mary does make a change, and being Mary, this seems a little confusing, I'm, I'm sure Mary can do it. I don't think he does, she can't force him to.
Another article and change it, so we either have to take that out and replace it with something else.
But the model motion that Mary suggested for us, which is a good one, is to approve the public, and I will make it, to approve the publication of the winter issue of the Township Newsletter pending non-substantive editorial corrections, period.
Sure. And, and I think the recycle.
Is there support?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm supportive, I mean, I think the recycle, it says, you know, recycling cans means it gets recycled locally, otherwise it starts in Australia, goes to Asia, comes across the boat, I, I.
Maybe just see the title change.
How are we going to know that?
Well, well, I'd say, maybe the title is recycle locally, and then they can read all that, that, that's all you probably have to do.
It made sense to me.
Yeah, there you go. Why you should recycle local, locally, that's, that's your title, right there, we're all set, okay, let's go.
So there's a.
Set that, set that motion. So there's a motion by Flintoff to approve the publication of the winter issue of the Township Newsletter pending a non-substantive editorial correction. Is there a second?
There's support by Brizo.
Yeah, oh, support by Brizo, I see that, it's true, yeah, so, fine, so we have support, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, at the G six, Trustee Carrie.
Yeah, so with this, um, and I did talk to Chris about this, so, you know, it's about having, um, uh, uh, I T, you know, over at the.
Yeah.
Fire Department to connect here or whatever, but also security cameras. And I asked if they would, if the security cameras, well, they're going to be on the outside, so nobody has to worry about, you know, inside, um, but it's only going to be on the fire department side. I would like to see cameras on the sheriff department side, and the reason why is because in my land, oh, I can't, I don't know what year it was, but there was a deputy that was gunned down at the station in the parking lot.
You, no, I, I think cameras should be, sure, sixty degrees around both of them.
But there wasn't a plan to have it on the sheriff department.
Yeah, no, I agree with it.
So even if it's just two, I don't know where the, the doors or whatever, but.
Maybe to start with two, with the idea that we provisioned for more, the cameras are not expensive.
Yeah, but it's, it's, that wasn't part of the plan, so I want to make sure it's.
Good point, yep.
And that was the only thing.
So you'd want to change the model motion for the fire station in, in Maggiad, including security cameras for the, like, the.
Yeah, you could say the fire station building.
Yeah, what's the whole building called?
The building, yeah, it's our building. And, and I could also suggest, um, another amendment to authorize expenditure of fifteen thousand dollars of previously budgeted ARPA funds, to be clear, it's not a new appropriation.
Because it's.
Okay, with those amendments, is someone, uh, ready to make the model motion? Riser is, Riser makes the motion to authorize expenditure of fifteen thousand of previously budgeted ARPA funds for information technology improvement to the fire station building.
Awesome.
Support by Noel, please call a roll.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo? Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven two.
All right, that brings us to public comment number two. This is the time. All right, that brings us to public comment number two. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the per view of the Board of Trustees. And I see we have someone present ready to speak. Are you ready to talk?
Yeah, Lloyd. Oh, I didn't turn my hearing aids down. Oh, wow. Sciouac resident, thank you. Trustee Noel, presentation on tree fund. Words have meaning. I've said this before in public comments, words have meaning. And when something here on this says, presentation of the tree fund. Thank you, Trustee Noel. Hathaway, when you bring an issue before the board, you've done this before where you conveniently leave out resumes, information to educate your fellow board members so that they too can be on the same page as you when making a decision. It's disrespectful and it's unprofessional to not be better prepared. Treasurer Palmer wants this board to be out of the sandbox. Well, Supervisor Hathaway, please do a better job and treat all chairs as well as de facto chairs equally when you are making decisions. Look, Flynn Top, in regards to your comment having to do with Dexter. I was at both of Dexter's last meetings and an interesting point of reference is one council member thought spoke towards the end. It was very long-winded, whole Baker Road issue. Is that if he owned the property, and I'm not going to say it, this is my interpretation, I'm not saying his words specifically, that it would be best to keep the property the way it is. And now I know that's easy to say for somebody who doesn't own it. But if you, if you watched the Dexter meeting two weeks ago, you would have seen that there was a petition signed by six hundred residents who were against the condo unit that is going there by the fire station. And yet Dexter decided to go ahead and approve the condos that were going in there. Dexter residents are very adamant at wanting to keep a small town feel. And so I, and I, I also saw that Dexter city council members were saying, we want to honor our neighbors' silotownship. So I would say be very careful how you proceed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Someone else present who wants to speak?
I'll just say one thing really fast. I forgot to say earlier. Weather is changing, but the concrete is not quite outside the entry doors uneven. That may be a future liability of the township, so.
Up to the township hall door.
It's outside that door. It's got about an inch so far that it's uneven and it's only probably going to get worse with the freeze thaw situations. So that's something that should be looked at.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Remote participants?
Sure, if you'd like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. First up, we have Rob Pattinson, followed by Kathleen Brant.
Hi, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Sciouac Township. Treasurer Palmer, in your report, you read the yellow sheet that accompanied our winter taxes. I went into B S and A and clicked on the, the down button that itemized where, in our case, it was two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That was our refund and itemized all the different categories, the different funds that it came from. And it was from township operating and school operating, and there was about ten or twelve categories, and there was a little bit from each one, and it all added up to two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Could you explain why all of these different funds are involved in returning money to residents?
It's only coming from that road money. The Silotownship Special Assessment that we had. It has nothing to do with the different lines on the bill. Those are the dollars and cents on the bill that is collected for the county and community college and schools, and they're all listed. Has nothing to do with that payment as we described it on the tax form. That is coming from the road money.
That's interesting. That's not how it appears on the B S and A page, so maybe in your next treasurer's report, you could clear that up. I'd just like to note, we've been asking for years, specifically at least two years, for a rules of order change, and I think this is for the rest of the board. Will, I know you haven't listened to us on this issue for two years, so it might not make a difference to you, but this is for the rest of the board and for manager Palmer and township attorney Fink, would you all please notice when there is an agenda item that involves the fire chief, the I T department chief, Anna Cohn is the parks director? When there is someone sitting in township hall for three hours waiting for you guys to notice them and you our chief tonight sat there for three hours, every single one of you saw him, and nobody made until three hours later, nobody made any attempt to get him some help so that he could go home. So I ask all of you, please, please, please make sure that when those types of representatives are part of the agenda, please make sure they're at the beginning of the agenda. And then to trustee Riser and trustee Brzezo, welcome to the bad old days. This is how it was for two years when our supervisor employed all kinds of dirty tricks. What he didn't tell, he lied to Judy earlier, and tonight trustee Brzezo, he lied to you. What he didn't tell you is that Monica Knowles is the wife of Jack Knowles, the previous supervisor, and his friends, and has made contributions to his, his campaign funds. So there is a very good reason why he wants her on the compensation commission, because they're buddies. And he never said anything about that, and that, in, in my opinion, is a lie by omission. And then when you asked about the fire, trustee Brzezo, when you asked about the fire chief, say, why didn't you put him at the beginning of the agenda? And he blew it off by saying, well, we can discuss that and spend time and discuss that now, or we can talk about it later. Refused to answer your question. That's the kind of dirty tricks our supervisor has employed for years and those bad old days were really bad. I hope that you two will help us avoid having that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up, Kathleen Brant. Followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Kathleen?
Hello, Kathleen Brant, still a Sciouac resident. For the benefit of township council and new members on the board, I'd like to give you a little history of the compensation commission. The commission was established in June of twenty twenty-one. On August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Hathaway put forth a motion to double his own salary. Keep in mind, this is after the commission has already been established. He put forth the motion, he voted for himself, he did not recuse himself. At the end of November is when he first made appointments to that commission, which put it behind the eight ball because they had one month to finish. Because he voted himself a salary increase, a resident sued the township because he was breaking the compensation commission statute, Michigan statute. I think he recognized that in December, he offered to lower his salary because he was going to lose that case, or at least probably, if I had standing, I would have won that case. I applied for the compensation commission. So I knew all about the statutes. This is also for the benefit of Judy because I'd love to see you on the commission. So when we talk about the legality of doing appointments in thirty days, he waited six months for the first appointments. When the, the commit, when the ordinance was created for the compensation commission. And then he had the gall to double it, he'd vote his salary doubled, which we all knew, I knew, that that was illegal because you can't vote your salary after you have an ordinance for a compensation commission. Another item in the Dexter city council meeting last night, I just wanted to let the board know that Dave Lutton called Silo's resolution regarding the annexation specious. He said, your resolution was specious. I think that's disrespectful to the Silo board and to the Silo residents. Just wanted to make sure you knew that. And then finally, in the DDA statute, number one, two, five dot four, two, zero, four, section two, zero, four, item one, the CEO, which is defined as the supervisor, is on the DDA or his designee from the governing body. I read the statutes when the supervisor says, I don't think that's there. I think they just said it was in the ordinance. Read the statute. It's not that hard. Thanks. Appreciate your listening to me.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hello, good evening. I find it interesting how many times the supervisor had a difference of understanding about a previous conversation with somebody in the past, just tonight alone, let alone all the other times it's popped up in the middle of the meeting. It seems very convenient when he is being caught in direct mistruths. As Rob pointed out earlier, our supervisor, who I believe has a self-awareness of a cartoon villain, villain, wants Monica Knoll on the compensation committee. You know, Jack Knowles, her husband, holds Will's remote, the remote to Will's shot collar. And so it's no doubt he would want her on the commission to both vote for his salaries, but also to do things like take action and, and poke at the clerk and other people who the supervisor deems his enemies. It's embarrassing. I think the supervisor should resign immediately. Better. We should create a time machine and resign a couple of years ago. It's really an ugly, ugly meeting tonight, Will, that you presided over, and it's very much due to your game playing and malevolence. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other interested public, please raise your Zoom hand. I see no more interested public.
Yes, moved by Brzezo.
Support.
Support by Noel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eleven oh five.
Yay.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.